Counsel, you may have noticed this morning that you've got some additional sheets. That is something that we've been able to produce since this weekend. The reality is we didn't get certified values from Ector County until Thursday late, and then we didn't get the estimated certified values from Midland County until Saturday. So these reflect some of those changes, but we're going to go to more details with this information. I want to thank you again for your time this morning and thank you for allowing us to come and present the FY '23 budget to you. Before I start, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Cindy, Zach, Larry, and Seth for all of their hard work. These folks, as you can imagine, worked on this for a very long time. It takes several months to get to this point. It takes several hundred hours to develop the information that you receive, and certainly dozens and dozens of hours in discussions with other departments related to their needs. So again, I just really want to thank them for all their hard work and effort. This year, we're going to see and will show you that we did have a slight increase in overall property values of about 3.2% over the prior year. The increase, as I said, was about 3.2. We did see an appreciable increase in sales tax compared to sales tax this year to last year. We're at about 16.7% higher than we were last year in terms of sales tax. While we did see some increases, we're going to still recommend to you a relatively conservative approach to budgeting. We think that that's a good philosophy that will help us not only get through this year, but may result in some excess dollars at the end. So we'll talk about those dollars specifically. That isn't due at bar council because we've seen that happen when we dealt budget conservatively. And in the following year, we have that economic year. So we want to make sure that we talk to you about those sort of things. I'll tell you again that sales tax accounts for our largest component, as it does every year in terms of revenue. Sales tax for this estimated sales tax for this coming year is about 40% of our total revenue, whereas property tax comprises about 33%. We'll talk about the property tax and the rates in greater detail in Cindy's presentation. We anticipate revenues of sales tax of about $45, $46 million for fiscal year '23. There is about $1 million in takeout for check-to-pretty-aid payments. So that will net us roughly about $44 million in sales tax revenue as opposed to what we budgeted for last year, which was $37.45 million. We'll also talk about potential rate increases for water and sewer. We'll be recommending to you an increase of about 6% in water and sewer primarily due to this will be the first year that we begin payment on the 2021 debt issuance. So that is reflected in that, as well as, as you all know, increasing inflationary costs, the cost of chemicals and other operational matters associated with the water treatment plant. As it relates to solid waste, we're also going to propose to you a 3.5% increase for solid waste. These are primarily due to increase in typically that we receive. So this is something that will pass through, and again, other associated inflationary costs. We'll also talk to you about supplementals. Every year when we have these, we reach out to our departments and ask them, what is it that you need beyond your current budget that will help you continue your operations? This year, we asked specifically that they only look at items that were critical for operations. We'll go over those lists with the council and seek their guidance. What we've done is we've had one-on-one discussions with each of the departments in order to ascertain their priorities for projects. And what we've done is also provided you a recommended list. This is only a recommendation in the city manning office. We would certainly like to discuss those items and provide additional information to meet those. You'll see that supplementals are broken up into one-time. Those are items that will require just one-time cash infusion as well as what we call omdo. And those are the sort of items that will continue from this point moving forward. So those will be discussed with you as well. Beyond supplemental requests, we're also going to ask that you think about putting additional dollars toward the Parks Department. You'll see that the Parks Department did submit a supplemental. We've recommended several of our state's top priorities. But beyond that, we think that there's an ability to diffuse about $1.5 million for the development of potentially two new parks. Now, these are small neighborhood parks. There has been and is also identified in our Parks Master Plan a need for parks specifically on the east side of town, so we can discuss that with you as well. We are also going to recommend to you a transfer of a general fund of about $10 million to continue some capital projects specifically for our parks. Again, we'll discuss that with you as well. And finally, we can discuss compensation. As you know, that's a very hot topic. You know, this evening, tonight, as a council, we'll provide the approval, if you so choose to, for the initiation of the comprehensive compensation classification study. That information will be important as you make future decisions on compensation. At the council request, we're going to ask that our consultant begin that one specifically required. So we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. At this point, counsel, I'm going to hand it over to Cindy, and she'll get more detail into this year's budget and pretty simply ask any questions, give further explanation, protect the entire team, and help answer those questions.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you were given a color sheet that looks like this and a packet that looks like this. So we're going to just dive into property taxes. That's one of the biggest things with our budget and adopting a rate that council will have to do that in council meetings. So when we prepared the book for you, we had preliminary values provided to us by both of the appraisal districts. Since then, as Michael said, we've got our final value of Midland called theirs, their final estimates. And that's their choice. I don't know that they'll make additional, but throughout the year, where people can still file homestead exemptions, can still file over 65, they can still do. So there's always going to be adjustments made to the actual total value, but this is pretty set and stone as far as what they're going to issue based on the tax rate that we give them that we're going to adopt. And then there may be changes throughout the year. So in the first column, you'll see you have the 2022 certified numbers. And so I've broken it down between what's Ector County, Midland County, and then a total. And then you have two years prior to look at some comparisons. So our mineral values did get a lot. Looks like they more than doubled from last year for ECAD. They also went up quite a bit under the MCAD. Real estate values also went up in both categories, ECAD and MCAD. Our industrial, it went up a little bit in Ector County, but in Midland County it went down some. Personal property, this is typically trailer houses, mobile home type things. That didn't change too significantly either way. And then our commercial property. And I think Midland includes any commercial property they have up in real estate and industrial, so it's not broken out separately like it is for Ector County. And so that went down a little bit, that's commercial personal property. And that could be, I mean, these values are to be assessed at January 1, so it would have been January 1, '22. I think we've seen the economy pick up some. I'm not sure how much their business personal property might have inflated since then, but remember, these are values as of January 1. And then we list all the different exemptions. So if they are significant, I mean, totally exempt property means that that's property owned by governmental entities, the city, the county, the school district, the hospital district. So of course, that's always a big number. Our homestead exemption is pretty significant. I will remind you, Midland, City of Midland does not give homestead exemptions. They do do over 65, but they do not do homestead exemptions. So come down and you see your net taxable values, and the increase from the prior year was 335 million. So that's about a 3.0, almost a 3.3% increase in values. So I'm showing you some percentages, a total exemptions to market value of 20.36%. And homesteads, just for an idea, is 6.5%. So and then I'm showing you several different tax levies. And the first one is a voter approval rate. Now, we used to call that the rollback rate. So if you went above the rollback rate, then you had to take it out to vote. The voter approval rate means that's the highest you can be before you have to take a rate out for vote. The increment means when they passed the change in the tax bill 30 years ago, I believe, then if you do not adopt the voter approval rate in a year, you take the difference between the rate you adopted and the voter approval rate, and that can be rolled over. So if you get to a year where you really need to increase your rate, then you should pick up those increments. Okay? I think it's a three-year rollover, is that right? So in 2020, on the 2020 tax row, we did not go to the voter approval rate. We were under it. And last year, on the rate effective the year we're in now, we did not raise it also. So we have an increment that's available. That takes it up to, as you see down below in the blue, it takes it up to .5221993. So that's a pretty significant increase. The actual voter approval rate without the increment is the peak number, and that's .497075. And the no new revenue rate is .483791. The difference between those two is the incremental increase of 3.5% on your maintenance and operation rate. Okay? So y'all understand, our tax rate's divided into two rates, maintenance and operation, and then debt service. Debt service is just the amount needed to pay the debt that is being paid out of property taxes. Now, y'all recall, we have some COs that sound like general debt. They're guaranteed by our property taxes, but they're paid out of water and sewer. Okay? So that's not part of our rate, just to make that clear. Sometimes that gets confusing, I think, to our constituents too. So anyway, so our MNO rate, you get to increase 3.5% in your voter approval rate, but it's not in your no new revenue rate. Okay? There are a lot of factors that go into calculating the rate. Part of it is, I'll show you, it's like an eight-page calculation that you go through, and it's pretty in-depth. One of the new things, one of the things that affects this is new property. Okay? So we all know that we're building houses right and left everywhere. So new property on the tax row for '22 out of Ector County was $185,684,000 worth. New property out of Midland County that's in City of Odessa Limits was $59,551,000. So that was pretty, that's almost all of the increase that happened on Midland's values. Okay? So that's some numbers that I think might be important to you. So you'll see numbers highlighted in yellow, and they're also in yellow on this. So I think for purposes of management, we're looking at raising it to the voter approval rate. That is an increase of, as you will see on here, it's an increase of .019960, so almost two cents. The reason being is as we are seeing inflationary costs go up, I think we have to be good stewards of trying to do incremental rates. Last year, we chose to stay at the same rate as the prior year because at the time, we were issuing the debt for the water treatment plant, and it was the end of COVID, so we felt like people were trying to get back into working and all of that thing. So we felt like it should probably stay the same that we are asking you your opinion on in going to a higher rate.
Okay, I have a quick question. So are we proposing the .497075 or the 5219?
The .497075. So you can see the difference that the increment is. That's how much we accumulated in two years of not going to the highest rate allowed without taking it out to vote. Okay? Any questions about the calculations or anything there? So on the next page of your individual packet, this will show you the impact that this has. So we listed the preliminary values, which is what was in your book. But if we go based on the new values, and you can see the preliminary values were actually a little higher than what we got as final values. It's pretty minimal, but it's still a difference. It went down a little bit. If we do the no new revenue rate, we create tax revenue of 51.104 million. If we use the voter approval rate, it creates 52.507. We basically use a 96% collection rate because you don't collect everything in a year, so you need to be aware of that. So it gives us net revenues. And then our debt service for this coming fiscal year is 12, 12.5 million there. So that'll get you general fund revenues 36.5 versus 37.8. So it increases at about 1.34 million. So would you like to, I mean, do you want to kind of discuss the tax rate before we look at general fund budget? Or you don't want to see what expenditures look like before we?
We should maybe talk about it. I agree with what the proposal is, the proposed rate of the .497075. I mean, it is an increase technically, but it's really minimal.
I think you're still going to see increases. At the bottom of this sheet, down here, I've given you, this is information provided by the Ector County Appraisal District that tells us what the average home taxable value is. And you can see the last three years. It actually increased to 173,428. Last year, in the middle column, they told us that the average value was 166, but on their comparison that they gave us this year, it had dropped down to 165. That means they adjusted some values or more, and it could be due to the homestead exemptions or over 65 or disabled exemptions. So.
Yeah, that's what the book was just talking about.
It's at the very bottom.
It's at the very bottom.
Okay, I didn't get that.
So you know, that looks like about 4.9% increase in values. But if anybody's trying to buy a new home, they know what that looks like too. They're all going up in price.
It's pretty minimal. I mean, the average price is 173, that's pretty low. I just wonder how conservative the appraisal district was coming by the end.
Well, you might think District 3 and 5, I believe, on some of those, our values aren't going to be as.
There's so many more houses in 2 and 4. I mean, they're going up at $300,000. And I just think, sometimes I just think that, I know in my neighborhood, the appraisal is pretty substantial. Michael, I'm talking about it. And whatever areas, you know, they didn't go enough at all. I just wonder sometimes if they are a little conservative. They just do windshield pricing anyway, that's what I remember.
But all of those appraisals are statutory, written by the state. Now, they get graded by the state of how well they did it.
Right.
And, you know, they're trying to keep that all in mind as they're appraising.
So Mike, where's the city limit stop going north on 385?
On 385, well, it stops around 47.
54.
54, that's right.
Rapid 56.
Yeah, and then it narrows up and necks up, if you will, along the road. And then it picks up around 87 for Longdale and rest of West Point.
But that includes Slade Mar?
It does not include Slade Mar.
The one reason I was asking is because one of the things I know that Ector County doesn't do, that Midland County does, and that's why I wanted to put Slade Mar in there, because they don't, nobody charges property tax on personal appointments. Ector County doesn't. That's why I wanted to park down Slade Mar. That's where it's needed, except for that way. It would be a source of extra revenue if that was inside the city limits. And that's a pretty substantial personal property. Of course, most of them are corporate acts, but a lot of them are personal.
As we discussed internally, what our recommendation would be, we really were just looking down the road, looking at what we've seen just generally in terms of cost increases across the board. We recognize that everything that we're buying down is costing significantly more. Not only is it costing more, it's going to take longer to get it. Obviously, there's a certain factor included in this for salary increases that we also get looking forward. But ultimately, it is just staff's recommendation. Counsel, I have a special, so whatever rate they think is appropriate.
So what do you all think?
Mike, let me ask you a question. Last year, we did, last two years, you did no, I'm sorry, 2020, no new revenue. And then also for '21, we did no new revenue. Okay, so for '20, when we did the no new revenue, at the end of the year, how close did we get to? Were we still, I mean, there's still always going to be incremental.
It was very minor.
What do we think, within a percent?
Uh, no.
A little bit more than that, right?
Right, so our increment, the increment came about mostly due to last year. So the first year, it was.
This is '20?
Yeah, it was .0048, so it wasn't even a penny.
Even a penny. And '21?
And then in '21, it was .024918. So that's where most of the increase came in because we did not raise it last year. In fact, last year, I don't think we even were at the.
We were under the no new.
We were under the no new revenue rate.
Because if you see on your sheet, 2021 in purple, that's the no new revenue rate for last year. .48 to 489, and we stayed at.
And we were under that. So I mean, we are due to make an increase, and that's another reason that we really think. Otherwise, you're just going to, and you will lose that increment. It only lasts for three years, so.
So we have one more year that we could have kept it down.
The initial year.
We're at that.
Yes, the initial year, 2019, a state mandated that as zero because it was year of change.
We don't go that route of staying in no new revenue with the consequences. What happens next year?
Then it keeps building. It's going to build the difference between the .43 and the .497, so it'll increase that. We don't lose any yet, so it'll increase that difference. And that total difference is.
So that would be a bigger jump, is what you're saying. Two ways or next. That's one of the things that, I guess, in my lifetime, I've learned is it's easier to do small incremental as opposed to one big jump.
I'm sorry, the total of our increment is the 0249. For '21, it was 020.
020?
So combined, we're at 0249. So we would just be increasing.
So Mike, the recommendation that staff has put forward in going to the voter approval raise for the reasons that your anticipation of unknowns, other factors, inflation, things of that.
I don't know if that's unknown, a lot of it is known. We know we're getting higher increases. We know that our equipment's costing more. We know that staff is going to cost more. So part of that factor is in there. And then there is a certain level of uncertainty for that question.
Okay, so can you give us some examples outside of just payroll, insurance benefits, things of that nature?
Well, I would think the biggest thing, we did not build into the budget the increase in salary due to this compensation study. We felt like we don't know what that number is. I mean, if we knew what that number was, we would be projecting to go ahead and do the increases. We need the compensation study to tell us that. It's too big a, going through each department, each level of employee is quite cumbersome. So we didn't label a number that said, okay, we're going to have 2.5 million to give based on the results of the survey. We didn't want to say, this is all you've got to work with. We didn't want anybody to think that was the limit. We want it to be a true compensation study that tells us where we stand in the market compared to other governmental entities, compared to our current market, so that we had a real feel of where we were with all of our employees. So I think that's one of the bigger reasons why we're saying we need to move forward with this. We did increase the sales tax budget because of what this year turned out to show so that we could accommodate the 4% that we gave in April because now it's twice that much, because what we had to pay out was half of it. So now we have double that amount going forward. We also had, we also had increases in a lot of our line items that we had to increase. Some of it, you know, is charges from other departments. Equipment services seeing big increases. And I mean, y'all seen that in things presented to council, the cost of things is going up, fire trucks, you know, all of that that we've gone through. So I don't, we didn't, we anticipate a little bit of an increase possibly with our electric service, our encore. We just postponed that for 60 days, I think, to find out the results of that, so.
So the taxable value increase on the housing has gone up 4.9. This is going to be like a 3.9% increase, right, on the voter approval rate? So it's still below the 4.9, but that gives an additional 1.4 million around there.
So, you know, homeowners are going to fill it.
They already are.
I mean, well, they're already filling in another area. I mean, the city fills it too. I mean, you can't just. I mean, you can't just keep, uh, not passing that along. Everybody else's grocery store, everybody.
So let me ask you this question, um. In relative to now, we're going to do a six percent increase for the, uh, for the debt issuance on the, on the water treatment plan. What's that look like on the monthly bill for, for residents?
And that's in the book, it's on page twenty-one. No, it's this, here, we also retrieved.
You retrieved?
Did you bring it?
Yeah.
We have that issue, you can take it.
Page twenty-one?
And, and the six percent is not totally to cover the debt. I mean, we're still going to have, um, we're still going to come up a little short. We've been doing a two and a half percent to keep up with inflationary costs, um, for several years. Uh, we started out in twenty twenty-one. Um, so it's actually the two and a half percent plus three and a half percent. When we did, um, the C O issuance, um.
Which one?
The.
Water, the water treatment?
The water treatment plan.
The, the leaves one, yes.
Yes. Um, we were looking at a, um, just to do that, at the wraparound, uh, debt that we issued was six point four three percent. So, uh, we'll do three and a half this year, and then do an additional percentage next year to get us caught up to be, to covering the debt.
Cover the debt.
Yeah, we didn't, we were trying not to hit it all at once. We have a little bit of unbalance that, I mean, that's what we did this year. We did actually make a payment this year.
Yep.
Um, it was due in March.
Do we have, don't we have another one before the budget ends?
No.
Do we have one right after, but again?
Well, we do, but it's, um, the interest payments get split, they're paid in March and in September. The principal payments are made in March. Now, this one doesn't have a principal payment on it until we pay off the owed debt. That's what the wraparound issuance does, okay? So, and you can see that on page, uh, forty-five. So it's pretty clear, so once we pay off this owed debt, is when we start making payments on the principal. So that keeps our debt payments pretty much, um, not, you know, not making a big change from what we're paying now to going into the future, okay? So.
I'm sorry, what, what about our charging, excuse me, what about our charges from C R and W D for the water? Do they go up, down, in between?
We don't have an answer yet from C R and W D. They're, they're saying possibly two percent.
A little less.
Uh, I think we can handle that in the budget that we presented to y'all. Um, so, um, we've allowed for a little bit of extra in there for that purpose, but we don't have a firm answer.
But in part, that's six of a sense, though, I mean, we take that, we help cover that, correct?
Yeah, it's part of our inflationary, plus, um, yeah, we, we charge out our water to E C U D, and so, um, that will, if we get an increase, then we can increase the por, uh, us, uh, a portion of it to E C U D for that.
The six percent we have to do, because we're still going to come up short.
Yes.
Is to issue the debt service. And then also, you know, the, the rate's going to go up, we still have C R and W Ds. There, there's no choice, the six percent isn't even negotiable. Uh, and then not only for this year, but also for the following year. Discussion here is in, in what councils be comfortable with as far as the, uh, the abnormal rate. And so for the last two years, uh, we've held no new revenue. And so how it's going to equate is, and I've been telling everybody that the water rate's going to go up, there's just no way to hold that. You know, we made, we split the principal payment early in March, September, we did those from revenue. Now, you know, now we've got to start paying the debt, there's just no way around it. You'll see increments going up when you're on out until the debt is retired. So, Mr. Thompson is right, the thing is that when it comes to abnormal, and whether you increment or one of them sun, it's, the theory, either you jump in the water, get it over with, or you just string it out and, and just walk into it. It's just a level of comfort. No new, no new easy answers. Right now, I'd say I, I, I'm leaning towards a no new revenue rate, uh, because that is, gives us an option. Now, it doesn't, doesn't solve anything, the thing is, is that we're still going to see increases throughout the year. We're talking about an additional two million dollars is what we come in for the voter approval, two one point four, one point four? Not a lot.
I've tip, I mean, between, um, so the one point four is the difference between what we've put in your budget book and what is, um. So it's a difference of one point three million between the no new revenue and the voter approval. I mean, you can adopt a rate in between.
Yeah. You always come back to in the dot number, right? That's what, that's, that's, that's where I was going, right?
What, the question becomes, you know, to me, the question becomes the salary issues that is, what, that is such a huge unknown to us right now because of all the pressure of all the partners would be. And so, we adopt anything less than voter approval rate, it looks like to me that we can't amend it in the middle of the year. Yet, those salaries are probably going to be reality. And like our employees are, I mean, it takes me eighty-five dollars to fill my car up and you just, and, you know, I've got an eighteen gallon tank. But if somebody's got a little Corolla out there that's a twelve gallon tank, it's still a bit of a price, I have to double what I used to pay for it, that's it. I mean, our employees are giving ground, just like everybody else in the church. You know, that legislature's running at nine point one percent. And it's across the board, it's not just one area or others. So the whole city gets affected, I mean, everything we buy, we saw that overrun with, the budget was altering, fifty percent. It's a huge number, it's not just ten percent. You know, it's, I think it's a tough rope to hold all the way around, no real good answer on that.
Well, the, the results of compensation study will require budgeting, because we have not built that into the budget we're presenting to you. Um, we have a very good fund balance in general fund. Um, we are proposing to use a little bit of that, um, with getting some capital projects, um, to transfer to our capital projects, learn to get some of that done. But, um, there is room to take some out of there. We will just have to be cautious of what we can sustain going forward. And so that's part of the reasoning for, for increasing to your voter approval rate is to help you sustain going forward. Because once those increases are done, you know, it goes, it's, it's hard to take it back, um, so, um. And I think, um, I know that you are getting a lot of pressure from staff. Um, we really would like to, to be able to hold off doing anything until we get the compensation study. Because, you know, if that, if that reflects that we have people that really are at where they should be within our, our organization as far as pay, you just automatically give them something now, or ten one, then, um, does that put them in an over, where they're overcompensating, you know, based on what the study says, taking that back, it's hard to do.
It's impossible, you're not going to be able to take it back.
Well, I mean, I mean, you can, if you base it on the study, but that's real hard. People get that increase, and they have a hard time backing, backing down on it. But, you know, when times get tough around here, people do layoffs, they do reduction of pay, but it's still not something that's fun to do for anybody, so, um. So, uh, we can go forward and look at general fund budget, if y'all want to revisit the tax rate after we look at that some more.
Any more questions on that tax rate?
No, I think it's just important, as, um, Steve was saying, that we be mindful of the, of the, of the study, because I've been getting a lot of calls from people other than fire crews who now, you know, are wanting to be a part, a major part of that study, and it's just going to come in.
Well, everybody will be part of that study.
Well, I'm just saying, we won't get calls from other folks.
Yeah, that are disappointed that they're not in the.
Of course.
Yeah. And so, and, you know, I, I know that some of the councils have worked more extensively on the fire side of that. And it's really just a matter of where we can be in that, and, and have an idea on, on dollar, so.
But one of the considerations, thank you for bringing that up, but one of the considerations we have to, that we have to address as part of this budget is, and we haven't even started, as far as I know, yet, negotiating our, our local agreement with the county. It can't stay at seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, it cannot. That number's got to go to five or six million. Thirty percent of our runs are in the county, we're wearing out equipment, and, uh, and, you know, lots of hours out in the county.
That would take care of part of our payroll.
Yeah, they, they will take, well, you've got, you've got that, you've got the unfilled position money that we've got. And then sales tax, because there's three different places that we've got money to go get. Sales tax, like supplementals you're talking about, I think we ought to leverage the sales taxes. You know, if, if you want to do what the mayor's suggesting, and that's no new revenue rate, then you've got, but where, where can we get it? Our local agreement is one, it helps us a lot, because we've got to have a significant increase, and, yeah, that's all there is to it. Uh, and then we've got the, the unfilled positions, one hundred ninety-nine. I mean, I, you know, I saw the news story last night on our nine one one people, they say they're, they only got four, they got all these people short, but if we raise salaries to twenty dollars an hour, what's the realistic, for those people, I'm just saying as an example, what's, how realistic is they're going to fill all thirty-two of those positions? I don't think it's very good. Every business out there's got hiring signed up, you go in every restaurant, every store, everybody's short of staff. What makes us think that raising our rate to that is going to help attract people? I don't think that's, I mean, it's nice to say, but the reality is.
It's retention.
Hey, those places are probably going to go unfilled for a while.
I think the main part is just the retention, it's not, it's not.
No, I, I, I hear you, but you're not, what do you think, is it cracking, we're going to go from, you know, all the thirty-two?
I, I do agree, without getting too far off topic about the interlocal agreement, I'm three hundred percent with Councilor Steve, but, uh, where are we at on that? I mean, and we got, we got the email saying what, uh, what we're going to be working on on that, but then it's just kind of getting on, on the wayside. Something that we do need to address.
Yeah, these are not supposed to get with, you know, the fire talk though about that. Natasha's trying to set up a, you know, reached out to the city, the county attorney to try to set up a media, so we don't have to talk about it. So that they know, and I've had one comment with Greg, he knows it's.
We talked about, we've eliminated what we talked about, the interlocal says it applies to the budget.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm doing.
That's a big part of the.
That's a big part of the budget.
Yes, yes.
That's fine, you know, and Greg, um, there's just an offhand comment or whatever, he said he knows it's going up. He said, you know, I'm not sure I want to pay five million dollars, that's his comment. But there's a number up there, it's got to be, it's not seven fifty, I know that. So, you know, I, we reached out to the county attorney, trying to set up a media, but we got to do it sooner than later, and that's just a big part of the budget, because if we were to pick up two to three million there, it would help a whole lot. But, again, it's just covering our costs, it's not really extra cash, it's just covering all these fire trucks we're buying, the ambulances. So, I mean, well, that's just, but we've got the unfilled positions, we've got sales tax, and I don't think we ought to look at it kind of, I think we ought to be looking at using the sales tax to its limit, and not worried about having an extra leftover supplementals. If we don't want, if we don't want to go up on the property tax rate, that's, those are the pockets of money that I see that we have available.
Even if we don't raise the property tax rate, they're going to still feel it, because, just because their taxable values are going up. So, you know, five percent, they're always going to go up, so they're going to, they're going to feel it anyway. So, that's one thing that they don't understand, is that even though we don't raise the rate, and they, they still see us, we're raising the rates on them, because their, their eyes are going up. And, um, that's just take, that just takes, I guess, education on, on our part, that, hey, we're not raising the rate, I'm sure. So if we were to cut it back to one point nine five percent, would that, that would just basically be like, that's seven hundred thousand dollar increase, correct, over?
Split, split it in half.
Split it in half.
Cut it back to what mark I said here?
Just split it in half, go to one point nine five percent, which would bring instead of one point three something, one point four, that'd be plus seven hundred K.
He's saying do a rate in between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate.
By the way. What if we're saying that the mayor's words, if, if the voter approval rate, one point four million, which is, is, is going to help seven hundred thousand? Really, it's a significant talent.
Yeah.
It's half. So why, I just say, no new revenue rate, that's, that'd be my comment for it.
If you're going to, if you're going to raise, just raise it to one point four. This is, it's, it's still a same, it's still a same penny, not, not agreed.
Do you have any other, what you have other intentions of doing?
They've all just been, they've talked.
I'm going to have to go with the mayor on this, the no new revenue. You also, our employees are very important. Our cost of operations are out of control, I guess, the price of diesel just keeps going up. But that's true for our citizens as well as our employees. So I'm saying let's go with no new revenue rate, and when the study comes back, then we can adjust. Because that, you know, until then, that's kind of the, the unknown here.
Well, you can, you can adjust salaries, but you can't adjust the rate at that.
Not that.
No, the rate, once you set the rate, that's set for the, uh, tax letting.
That's the, that's the damn.
Explain to me, um, the three-year look back, or you didn't use that word, I did, about being able to look back in, in determining your voter approval rate?
Your, if you do not adopt your voter approval rate, if you do something less than that, then the difference between that rate that you adopt and the voter approval rate, that difference can be rolled over to your next year. And you can do that for three years. Right now, we only have two years rollover. Because this, the law changed, the, the Texas, the property tax law changed in two thousand nineteen, where they dropped our incremental increase on M and O. So it used to, we used to always increase our M and O rate eight percent. You were allowed to do that under the, uh, property tax law, okay? And then they lowered it to three and a half percent, you can only raise your M and O three and a half percent. Okay, so, uh, they allowed you, if you didn't adopt the voter approval rate, the three and a half percent each year, they were allowing you a, uh, rollover of the increment between the voter approval rate and whatever you adopted.
Comes itself for the property.
Well, it allow, I think it allows for, um, you know, sometimes you have, you know, your, your operating budget may need a big influx, whether it's for salaries, whether it's for, um, you know, some of the smaller entities do a lot of their capital projects out of their, uh, general fund, and not necessarily are issuing debt for it. So that allows them a chance to, if they, if they're not doing something big in a year, then they could roll that over, and then the next year, they could do it in half. But it, it gets off, it gets to be a harder. But it gets, it gets to be a harder pill to swallow if you get to that point and have to pass it on to your tax, your taxpayers.
Are we seeing inflationary pressures on our supplies, water treatment supplies?
Yes, yes. Our, our tipping fees alone to the six percent increase this year, that's huge, and that's your fees you pay at the, at the level.
Everybody's looking to try to reduce their costs, even, even just transportation, but there's solutions, you know, they're coming, but they're delayed. Then you have to create new avenues of, of transportation.
We're seeing some costs upwards of fifty percent, chemicals at the large unit, I think the council is seeing those numbers as well. Fuel prices filling up.
Fifty, sixty percent, our equipment typically, trash trucks, and that age, we look at a three to five percent increase, we're seeing thirty to forty percent increase on equipment right now.
Yeah. You know, when it comes down to, I mean, the thought process is here is that, you know, if you held a no new revenue and you have to adjust for salaries, it's not gonna come from the April on, you have to find another revenue. Answering the question of, you know, there's no doubt that we need to readdress our, how we wind up responding outside of Ector County as far as when we're, about thirty percent calls from OFR. I think both sides of the entities have agreed that there has been negotiation in those adjusted rates, just a matter of where we fall. If that other entity isn't discussing in their budget, we're minimum two years away. So if we can't even factor that into our calculations whatsoever, that's something else we oughta keep in mind. And, and I don't know whether the discussion there or not, but the thing is, is that the other entities are in a lame duck situation, which makes it difficult to move forward consistently with any type of negotiation, because you can't do it as a group. One day it's leaning one way, the other day it's leaning another, there's no consistency. But I just do know this fact is that we cannot, you know, factor it into our calculations for this upcoming year, until at least a minimum of twenty-four maybe, which may just kick, keeps kicking it down. And then we still have to negotiate some in other areas that are very critical. I mean, I think, I know I'm leaning towards the no new rate, but also is that we do have in, in, in the adjustment for the salaries, where does that come from? Let, let's play that scenario real quick, you know, we would be dependent on sales tax in order to make that, in other type of fees. Right now, we're, we're projected for finishing this year, how much above of our, our projected numbers for sales tax?
Go to page nine in your book. So through, through July's collections, we're at thirty-nine million point six. Prior year was forty-one point three, forty-eight point two before that, you can see back to their early good years of seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So we're projecting that we'll hit forty-eight million, okay?
For twenty-one.
For this fiscal year.
Twenty-two.
Okay? So we increased our, and that's before, that's before we pay out any three eighty agreements, which run us about a million dollars a year, okay? So, so you can see we're coming in significantly over what we budgeted, but at this time last year, we were still with COVID and our sales tax were still pretty low, so, all right. And so for twenty-two, twenty-three, we increased that budget to forty-five million, that's a six and a half million increase. So we did a significant budget increase for sales tax. Matter of fact, less the three eighty agreements is at forty-four.
The issue with relying on sales tax too heavily on this point year of twenty nineteen, twenty, they could be depending on situations, pretty significant drop, I would tell you that we struggled that year pretty significantly, simply that we budgeted one thing and we didn't realize that when it affected the effects of COVID.
But we were real close, pretty close. So we feel comfortable going to the forty-four, the forty-five was the million, we feel very comfortable going there, but, I mean, every time you turn around, we're talking inflation, 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 and then somebody says, oh yeah, but we're gonna have a crash, so, you know, you listen to economists and you don't know which way they're really going, so. So that's, that's where we're at in projecting our sales tax journey in this budget.
Any other discussion? You wanna go ahead and start, go into the general?
Yeah, I think that would help if we would look at general fund, which is the next page, page ten. So the top part is just giving you the fund balance payout, but I think it's important to note that at the end of, at the end of two thousand twenty-one, we had a fund balance of a hundred and fourteen million, and we had a significant amount of the encumbrances outstanding that would be PO's contracts that would roll over of, let me take it here, of thirteen million. So of that hundred and fourteen million, basically ninety-eight oh forty-two, okay? Ninety-eight million oh forty-two was our unassigned fund balance, okay? And that's still, when you look at expenditure budgets of a hundred and nine million, it's pushing close to a hundred percent, so it, it is a good fund balance. So what we, if I'll point you to the estimated call in a minute, we are, our estimate of operating revenue is a hundred and four point eight million, that includes that projected sales tax that we just looked at of the forty-eight million. So we came down, we have annual operating expenditures of ninety-seven and a half, then we're looking at, we still have some projects that have been approved in the past that haven't spent out, that won't spend out by the end of the year, so it's about six million dollars. We are projecting nine million out of this balance, a million out of next year's budget to, to transfer over and spend for street projects. This is not street maintenance, street maintenance is built into this budget already at six million dollars a year. This is for significant growth projects that we might have, need to have to do, we're talking about, I think all of y'all are aware of how the Fodry bid came in way over what we were expecting. Parks projects, the million and a half, Michael mentioned that earlier, that was that, and there's probably about six hundred thousand, I think, left out of the CO nineteen money that was allocated to parks, you know, we, the majority of that money was to go into the revamping of the Floyd Green Park, but there's still about six hundred thousand left in that money. So with those two amounts, I think we could, according to Steve Patton, that we could do two new neighborhood parks. I think he's already working with the Parks Foundation as to would they, would they pay for the playground equipment? That's one of the things that I think the Parks Foundation does for us, is provide playground equipment, so. And then the one-time supplementals, which is detailed in the book also, and we'll look at those individually in a minute, of one point seven million. So that puts us at a hundred and fifteen eight, which is gonna decrease our fund balance about five, five point one million dollars. I don't think that's an issue because of, we actually ended up about eight and a half million to the good in twenty-one. So I think we can handle that reduction. I also think if necessary, when we get the salary survey back, we, we've got a little room in our current year projected budget, but we could also fall back somewhat to fund balance for increases in pay. Again, as I cautioned y'all before, we've got to think about that going forward, because you don't wanna be taking that increase out of fund balance for every year. So in the proposed budget, we have total current revenues, our operating revenues are at one oh three, six ninety. This includes your property tax, sales tax, grocery receipts tax, permits, EMS charges, fines and forfeitures, our court charges, industrial contracts, the gross receipts tax, the payment and loop tax from water and sewer, and then administrative transfers are listed down below, as well as intergovernmental. Those are, that would include like the payment from the county, includes some grants that actually flow through to the, to the general fund. Most of our grants are in special revenue funds, but there's some little ones that can be. And then our projected expenditures for personnel, seventy-one, seventy-five point one, supplies, services of twenty-one million, our maintenance costs at seven and a half, capital outlay outside agency costs, which were approved by y'all already, and then transfers out. We increased this a hundred thousand dollars to the golf course, and we'll talk about that when we look at golf, so. Then the million dollars that we talked about just a minute ago for street projects, and a million, almost a million three, and ongoing supplementals, that's a lot of what departments turned into as inflationary costs that they're seeing, so. So right now, with this budget, you're netting six hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and if we raised it to the, the voter approval rate, that would take that up to about two point one million. We, you, Michael told you, we've spent hours and months gathering numbers, and so we put them at a really high level for y'all, because the detail we're driving us, and so, you know, if there's something in particular, but on the next couple of pages, Zach does a really good job of telling you where we're seeing increases and decreases from last year's budget to, to this proposed budget, or the budget we're in now to next year's proposed budget. And so you can see we have, some things are going down, some things are going up, you see the six and a half million for the sales tax, property tax, that would increase if we went to the, this is based on our preliminary no new revenue rate, so that would increase if you go to the voter approval rate by the one point four, okay? Fines and forfeitures are down a little bit, our industrial tax went down a little bit, just some different changes there. Starting at the bottom of the page, we see changes in our expenditures, start with personnel services, so you see that. I will tell you at the top of page twelve, this fireman's retirement, we have proposed a two percent increase to the city's contribution rate for the fireman's pension plan. This is to help towards keeping that plan going. I mean, it's, the, the reduction in interest rates over the last couple of years, as I think their investments are still doing okay, but it obviously hurt them some. We need to always be conscious of the unbundled liability that the city has to reflect in their financials for the fireman's retirement plan. We are not proposing any increase to the employee, the fireman themselves, so they will stay at the percentage they're putting in at sixteen.
Right now, they're at sixteen, right?
They're at sixteen, and we're at twenty-six, so this will take us to twenty-eight percent.
What are, what are we trying to stabilize as far as the two percent increase?
Um, just, so that's per, that's per dollar of pay, so they, they took, they actually got an eight percent over the last year in pay, plus those that got, step pay got that increase as well. So this, along with that increase and this increase, I think it increases the contribution level for the employer into the plan, and will hopefully, as we can fill positions there, also have that increase from both them and us, to help stabilize that.
That two percent reflects, but what's, what's the gross dollar amount on an annual basis?
The gross dollar amount.
And how many, how many, how many positions we're talking about?
Well, we have two hundred and thirty-three positions, but I can give you what we contributed last year.
Cindy, you might give it, so will you just give a little bit of history on the, so in two thousand nineteen, I know the city, we had to go in front of the pension board and we had to up our contributions. So was it because the last twenty years we were giving what we were supposed to get that got us in that bond in two thousand nineteen?
Well, there, there's some differences in one's understanding of what you're supposed to give. When you're, so the fireman's pension plan is pretty much like a private plan that's just for our fireman, whereas TMRS is a group plan that the city participates in, and so they have an actuarially required contribution rate that we're required to do with TMRS as being part of that group plan. They, they, you can calculate that for the fireman's pension plan, it doesn't require the employer to do that, it's a suggested rate, okay? The fireman's plan, and I've been around the city, I hadn't been here that long, I started in ten, but I've been around the city a long time because I was the outside auditor, but in, back before two thousand and eight, that plan was very, very healthy, and they had a very healthy retirement plan as far as what you got when you retired as a fireman. And at that point, it was at age fifty, with twenty years, twenty years, steps on the board along with. And so in two thousand sixteen, the plan, they were getting comments from the pension review board, plus they hired a new actuary, and when that was done, the plan undertook a significant change. They increased it to fifty-five, with twenty-five years, they eliminated the drop program going forward, which was an additional amount that the retiree got at retirement, there, and those changes are outlined, if you'll look in the, in your book, I mean, we don't have to do it now, but in the required supplementary information, it gives you a detail of all the changes that were made in that plan. They did this because with the fall of their investments in two thousand and eight, the plan was not making much money on their investments, and so they were getting to where what was coming in exceeded what was going out in benefits, because the benefits had been so common. So they revamped what their benefits were, and they made a big significant change to that, there's, there's no doubt about it. They also increased their contribution rate, I think they'd increased it to eighteen at that point. And so in two thousand and nineteen, we went before the pension review board, and based on that, we came back and we lowered the fireman's rate down to and based on that, we came back and we lowered the fireman's rate down to sixteen percent, and we raised the city's rate, I think that's how we wrote it, raised it to twenty or, yeah, twenty. And then we've done subsequent increases to try to keep the plan going. Is it a big amount? Absolutely. I mean, it, I mean, y'all, we've gone through that with y'all when we go through the cap. It's turned around, I think, a lot with that change, with the change in their investment strategies and the consultant that they use. I think that was another problem was the consultant that was being used wasn't doing a great job for the plan. And so one of the goals is, is to keep your amortization period at thirty years or less. And so with those changes that we made, that did that. There was a recent change made, changed that a little bit. So I think this helps us get that back down to the thirty-year amortization and keep it under, thirty or hundred.
And in addition to that, there were struggles even before that, you know, with the pension. And I think some of it had to do with the consultant that we used. And that historically, in the fire service, people didn't retire till they were in their sixties. And that's what they based that plan on. Well, then, our generation came along, and, and the job changed. And staying until you were in your sixties and doing, especially firefighter's job, was, was extremely difficult. And so you started retiring out sooner, so they had a longer term that they were having to.
Pay out.
Pay out. And that's, that's when it started getting a little, you know, the employee contribution start, increases started prior to these issues. You know, in the two thousands or around two thousand.
Right, you understand?
Yeah, so it really, it's a perfect storm. You know, it was more the city not, because then it was just that perfect storm.
Another thing people don't realize, to your comment, is that thirty years might not cover it. Because people are living longer. You go live with an actuarial family, you'll find that average, you know, when I retired, sixty-five, the average. Eight, well, my age, sixty-five, it was like eighty-two. That's nine years ago. I suggest now that that eighty-two should probably be a lot higher.
And that's why they were getting COVID.
To kill guys like me. Thank you.
Missed it.
Appreciate that. But that's, that's the other reason, thirty years might not make it. So that pension plan's got to be funded. That's, that's why busting GM and all those car companies, they never funded their pension plan. They live longer.
There was also a time that TMRS did, had to do a revamping of their, of their actual evaluations and some of the assumptions. And so there's assumptions that are made. What interest rate of return are you seeing? What lifespan are you seeing? So there, you know, I'm not an actuary, would never want to be one. But those, those things change, and the lifespan tables change. So a lot of that changes every year. So there's flexibility that happens. But I, I think it's prudent of us to, to continue to look at that and see what we can do to help release it. When we went before the pension review board, the idea that we were building, adding a station to our city, which meant adding thirty more firefighters to the payroll, was a significant change. Because if you, if you take their salaries and you extrapolate their contribution and our contribution for those thirty employees over the period of time, it made a significant difference. Part of our problem is, is that we have to get, we have to maintain those thirty employees in the, in the system, that additional. And right now, we're short. I mean, we've always had some shortage, but three years.
Let me ask this bound question on that. Is there, is there a, with the fire aspect of the city employees, is there a guarantee interest rate return on their investment through the state? Not, not through the city? Because I discovered that through the county. Some years ago, I went through their budget process and discovered that there was a win, that when their pension plan under reforms, state legislature basically puts responsibility on the taxpayer to make up the difference at a point in retirement. Which at the point, at that point, I didn't understand how that worked, so I had to research. Never asked that question, that's across the board, that just kind of employs, because everything seems to be mixed in. This was back, I have to say about eight years ago. No, okay.
The, on TMRS, the employee puts in contribution seven percent, and the city is a match, two to one on that. Now, does that mean our rate is of like fourteen percent every year? And that, I mean, they do that actuarially determined contribution rate. We're at fourteen point.
Fourteen.
Fourteen point one four right now. Two years ago, we were at thirteen point nine six.
Yep.
Was that like?
That was last year.
Last year, thirteen point nine six. So it fluctuates a cent as well, but it's.
I think TMRS's investment strategy is a little bit more different than the fireman's pension plan too. Or a bit more, more secure, more, I think that are less risky if you will.
Well, I think a big part of it is just the sheer volume of what they have. I mean, there's, every city, I wouldn't say every city in Texas. I would say most of, the majority of them are going to be in TMRS.
So anyway, that fireman fund you're proposing increasing from twenty-eight percent, twenty-six percent to twenty-eight percent, city contribution?
Yes, and I was, I was trying to get to the side train to the major.
Where's that, where's that two percent coming from? Or is it, is it, is it a?
It's just built in.
Built in?
Yeah, it's built into the budget. So our contributions, the employer contributions to, for the twenty-one fiscal year end was three million eight fifty-five.
See that on page one hundred and eleven of your comprehensive annual report?
So we have a little bit of change in supplies, our services. A lot of that increased fleet replacement maintenance. That would include all the vehicles for fire, police, parks, building services, building inspections, you know, all, all that are not related to water, sewer, solid waste, so, okay. Maintenance increase. We did have a little bit of an increase in the outside agencies, and then our supplementals, and we will look at that on the next page. So seven point seven increase in expenditures. We had seven point six increase in, in revenues without changing the tax rate. So on page thirteen is, starts the supplementals for the general fund. If you look at page fifteen, we had a total ongoing request from our departments of two point three million. We had one-time requests of three point six million for almost six million in total. You'll see that we awarded one point seven, one time, which would come out of this year's budget. We would have made this year's budget to do that, which would be mostly out of our excess sales tax funding that we have this year. And then one point two seven three would be ongoing. It's amazing to me what a city election cost. So the city secretary asked for some additional money. We're doing that as a one-time because you don't have that main election every year. So sometimes it's cheaper, sometimes it's more. We are counting for ongoing a little bit for judges' increase in pay. We're doing some additional stuff for our communications department, trying to keep us up-to-date there. There's some things, building services that we funded, fire alarm system in city hall, community closing. We have a little bit of ongoing increase in our maintenance for elevators and those pumps and things. Want to go through every line item unless y'all really want to discuss every line item. We did look at, our restrooms at city hall and other buildings are in pretty bad shape. So we, we're going to try to do that incrementally the next few years. So we put in a hundred and fifty thousand to do some restroom remodels. And most of the requests that came from public safety communications had to do with, with pay increase. You'll see throughout the supplemental request, any pay increases we did not do because we're going to wait on the compensation study. So, and public administration, they're needing to use a consultant to revise some of our ordinances. I think they've talked about that before in council meetings. Onto page fourteen. We've had some increase on core, our lighting participation, that's gone up some. Our crack sale, our remixed material, all of that's taken an increase. So that's an ongoing. We have some software increase cost for our GIS people. The next big section is parks. We've got some ongoing maintenance issues, cleaning supplies and chemicals. We mentioned chemicals, chemicals, chemicals. We, the two big one there, two hundred and sixty, two thousand. Y'all recall the Y contractor running the swimming pools was about double what we had been budgeting as it was with the one that proposed. So this is building that increase into our budgets going forward. So this is running our swimming pools and splash pads. That's contracted. For one-time projects for parks, we selected the top five that.
Can I, can I stop you for one second? The three armed, the armed guards for three of the pools, is that good? Or is that?
Well, you know, we had an incident earlier this year, and this is one that we weren't sure about. It's been there anyway because we don't have the officers assigned to it. We could, but it's just going to be more overtime. It's going to be less expensive if we hire like a flight of security just to be at the pools to ensure safety of the folks that are there.
And that's just for the?
The season.
The few months that were.
What's the special services?
That's the one. That's the one.
It's one C A. Jim Parker parking lot.
Yeah, the Jim Parker parking lot, it took fifty, Sherwood Skate Park needs some.
It's got a contributor number. Does that have the whole parking lot? It's going to be a resurface for that?
Mayor, I think that's the one that backs up to the bottom.
Yeah.
Now, this was estimated before some.
No, I was going to ask you, this told you yesterday, how much that went up.
I was going to say that was low.
It may be.
Man, if we could get it for that, man, I'd say do it now, but yeah.
You know, arguably right, because again, let's see, that's made this several months ago. My deal on the special services, I know we increased the lock for the swimming pools for the Y's, yeah. Shouldn't, I don't know, shouldn't they be contacting up the armed guards for, for their, their pay?
That wasn't something that was, we've never had security at the pools before.
I would think that's a limitation.
Well, it wasn't in the proposal, the big proposal specs that we put out, so. So it wasn't included in.
So next year, do we need to go ahead and?
I mean, we could, but it would just be limited from one line to the next, but.
And I guess it would just accrue it from what, two sixty, two sixty-two?
Two, yeah. I mean, I don't know what it caused. I mean, our children are precious things. You hope their parents are there to help watch, but today's society, there's some stuff that needs to be done at Sherwood Park with the skate park, with the turf there, and at Slater Park, I think that's the dog park. And we've done lots of complaints about the grass at the dog park.
Yeah, we knew we got it.
Please keep that off my back.
Floyd Glen in Sherwood Park, we're looking at putting in a couple of additional water wells to help water there. And then some anti, or the aquatic centers, we did some work as well, thirty thousand. He has some others that are listed down below. And so he felt like those were the top priorities, so they just made it wait till another year.
Comanche Trail, oh, this is the resurface of the parking lot, which parking lot's in? This is the one to the west, for the Comanche Trail?
Yes, sir, this Comanche Trail would be the one on the west end.
So why are they doing away with the restrooms and putting in porta potties?
Because people, you would not believe what people do to that.
They, we usually get the fixtures broken off the walls, toilets broken.
This is Comanche Trail, where's, where's the rest of Comanche Trail?
On the light, got that?
Uh, maybe that's his south, is that?
The south.
Maybe that's his south, there, I'm sorry. The one with the pond? That, that's the restaurant that we would keep it up.
What is that twenty project going to do to?
You know, we, we, we're going to have impacts, Tom. And we know that it's going to bring that a lot closer to our playing fields out there.
It's going to affect McKinnon. It's going to affect, yeah, it's going to affect McKinnon. And Steve says it's going to bring it up to, pretty much close to the trail.
Pretty much to the trail.
Yeah, so we're losing about twenty-five feet.
Yeah, it'll impact that.
So is that going, is that, is going to impact the area where we have the business tree as well?
It's going to bring it pretty close to it.
We're going to have to move infrastructure as far as the electricity. We'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if tech shock is impacting that, they'll move it as part of the structure.
Going back to Slater Park, where we're going to put turf, is that going to help for her the issue with all the dogs?
Two particular dogs?
This turf that Steve is proposing, it's a, we just call it tip turf. It's supposed to be a stronger turf. It's built for athletic fields, dogs, and that nature. I, I think we'll be honest when we discuss it. You're probably going to be doing this every three or four years because the dog habit is going to eat that grass a lot.
So do we need to say yea or nay? I mean, like, I'm kind of opposed to putting turf on a dog park.
Are you talking artificial turf?
And this is probably about half and half between Sherwood and Slater.
Stuff at Sherwood is just general uses except Slater.
Well, I, I think part of it is due to us adding softers over to Sherwood is to build up that grass over there because of the.
If I'm thinking turf, I'm thinking artificial turf.
Yeah, I, he did some research on artificial turf for dog park, but I was like, no, no. Not a good result.
Is Slater a water well, water park?
I think we have water wells.
There's water wells, because it leaks. I can tell y'all about Slater, I get emails every time something goes wrong.
I get credit cards.
I see that.
Yeah, would y'all like to, I'm sorry. Y'all want to take like a five-minute break?
Yes.
Give us a break.
Y'all, y'all need to see. Y'all, y'all, y'all need to stay. Okay, um, we were working on page fourteen, the supplementals, um, so you can see the ones with parks that we didn't do. Um, we're gonna try to push those up to next year unless y'all have a different opinion. Uh, and, uh, mostly Sherwood Park, Murray Fly and Comanche Trail Park.
You know, uh, one of the things that Steve had brought, uh, recently was that ladder for the new pond.
Yeah.
And said it was leaking substantially. Is that something that needs to be put off or is that something that we need to look at sooner than later?
Well, he didn't put it as his top priority, so that's why we did.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Slowly.
Down below, we have, uh, the start of fire administration, so, um, they're needing to replace their radios. Um, we're gonna start that process, we're doing, um, half of them this year and then half of them next year. Uh, that's three hundred fifty thousand, uh, some face masks they need, um, there's a, a couple of things that they have some, uh, donation funds that they're gonna pay for out of.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, yeah, that, so that column that says other sources, it's the second to the last on the right.
Yeah.
If we think they had other sources to pay for some of these requests from, we, uh, shoot them in that direction. So the, uh, CDA bottles we did, also some wearing apparel on the next page.
Where is their lifeline money?
Their lifeline money sits in a, um, uh, a, a lot of it sits in the equipment service fund. Um, it sits in a liability account for them to utilize for, uh, they use a lot of that money for their gear, we play their uniforms, their, um, their outer coats, they put on that type of thing.
Cause it, it seems like we're still paying for a lot of that out of general fund, no?
Oh, it doesn't, no, lifeline does not cover all of that, no. So they have a uni, they have a wearing apparel budget within general fund.
Okay.
And then they have, uh, money that they spend out of the lifeline as well.
Okay.
No, it doesn't cover all of it. Um, there's quite a few things, uh, that they needed to increase as far as ongoing. Um, some of this is due to inflation costs, some of it's didn't do to having an additional station now that they would have to, um, take care of maintenance type items. Um, we've had an increase, uh, cost with the O C students, um, and part of that's because we're putting more through there, part of that's additional cost there. Um, they had, um, they asked for, uh, an administrative assistance position. As y'all are aware, we're redoing the Lee Building and all of, um, the Fire Marshal's Office is moving to there because they're cramped and can't fit into central anymore. So they're moving to the Lee Building, they'll be on the second floor. Well, right now, they're, they get administrative assistance through Central Fire Department's administrative person, which keeps them pretty busy. They have a part-time that pretty much works full-time. So they had asked for an administrative position for the Fire Marshal's Office. Okay? Um, and then they had asked for a supply clerk. Right now, the chiefs are handling their supply of, uh, all their different things and so they would ask for the position of a supply clerk to help, um, keep all of that straight, make sure everything gets checked in when somebody leaves, all of that.
So is that, is that new creation?
It's a, it's a new position.
And so what is, what is the exact new checkpoint, what equipment?
Well, they would handle as far as all of their supplies, whether it's, um, gear, uniforms, gear, um, tools, all of that type of stuff.
How'd they come up with the sixty thousand?
No, it's the, oh, yeah, I don't, I don't know how they came up with that, but we told.
We, we did an analysis of that position and its responsibilities, and there was a position similar in, in the police department that was also a supply clerk. Uh, and so we decided that based on the functions, this is a supply clerk.
We did it in-house.
So who does that now?
That's what I mean. Five, five, started fifty-one, fifty-two.
Yeah, this would first would not, this would be a similarly positioned, not a fire clerk.
Yeah.
And who, and, and those duties now are performed by?
The chiefs do that. The casual, the county chief handles something, so one maybe radios, one maybe uniforms, one maybe the computers and.
Yes, they're trying to get it more centralized, yeah. Um, when they first entered, they said they wanted a quartermaster and we were like, what's a quartermaster? That's just a supply clerk.
Fancy word for it.
Yeah, so, and this does include a benefit for that.
Do all these new positions, they're all listed, not, not just in fire, but on all of them, that include all the benefits?
I'm not sure that we did, uh, have, uh, these two positions, I'm not sure we had, oh, y'all, we did. We do have one in community development, they're asking for a field supervisor position.
That's new.
That's new.
Field supervisor ninety-seven.
It's for sixty-three, yeah.
Hundred and sixty-three.
Yeah, we funded it at sixty-three. I think they were asking, uh, they also asked for code enforcement supervisor.
And a hundred and ten.
We didn't think that was necessary.
So the code enforcement supervisor's next.
Well, can we stay on fire for a minute?
Okay.
What is, what about the information systems specialist?
So that is, um, someone, uh, who does I T department. So we have an I T department, right, that provides assistance to all departments in these areas. That's why we felt that perhaps this didn't need to get funded because we needed to look at it a bit more. Because if there's an issue with, um, uh, if we need to adjust I T service level over there, that's something that they can do internally.
So you're not, you're not gonna?
We're recommending not to.
Sixty-eight, three fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So on the quartermaster supply clerk, you show them a fund of thirty-eight thousand, that gonna be the?
That, that would be our recommend, the recommendation, again, based on function and it's similar to the existing position over at PD.
Okay.
Okay, and then a public information officer?
Yeah, we also did not recommend that.
Okay.
This was also gonna be for.
Yes, sir.
But we did not, but.
And then field supervisor.
Oh, well, let me, uh, cover police real quick. Uh, obviously, we would have some additional, uh, operating costs with a much bigger facility, so, um, they have, uh, projected an increase in that budget of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand for that.
Is that even a potential for a veterinarian?
Yes, and, um, we, uh, got a little bit of an update yesterday. Um, the lady that's been doing, um, spay and neuter for us is contemplating whether she would, um, move here and be, uh, vet or not, so that's still, uh, up in the air.
She's in Colorado Springs?
Colorado City.
That's a long trip. Nobody from Colorado Springs.
No, no, they're not. But I, I think she is saying that if she does decide she would.
Can I answer your question, Michael? I, I, we think we have a really good likely possibility that that person already does spay and neuter for us three times a week.
Yeah.
Uh, in which, uh, to my understanding, she does about thirty animals a day. So she's here on a full-time basis, so she'd get a lot more animals.
And, and we could do some different things with that as well, and we think the compensation could be covered by what we're paying her as a contract.
Yeah, the benefit goes beyond the spay and neuter, obviously, if you get an animal injured, you get an animal who comes in with a disease, you have a.
Command?
A, a vet area that can handle, and he'll get them.
Well, and wasn't there, and I don't know that PD really is one to do that, but wasn't there a mention also that she might could help some with, uh, Arcanids at PD? That a veterinarian on staff, I say she, but a veterinarian on staff might be able to provide some.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of possibilities. Um, if she's wanting to do maybe a evening work schedule, um, she's still committed to some other, I mean, that's part of what she did by coming here, she also went to other places as well for a day and did stuff, so there's a lot of things to work out, so, but it is a good, um, opportunity.
What's plan B if she decides to stay put?
If she stays put, uh, she hasn't indicated that she would quit doing what she's doing now.
But there's also the possibility of.
Problem?
Yeah, I, I know Tammy Hawkins was real excited about this and, you know, talking about not just A and M, but the Texas Tech's veterinarian school, they have them being able to recruit, especially someone out of Texas Tech that's gonna be more Texas oriented, so, anyway.
This may help satisfy another, the council's request. Without your program, again, we, uh, a veterinarian that can handle those things.
Then it wouldn't.
Right.
Right. For y'all. Okay, um, yes, and, uh, the other item that we funded for police was their restroom building, and then there's, and y'all know why we're proposing.
I'm gonna go check this out, you can mount.
It's like stepping back in time.
Yeah, way back in time. Probably way before you were.
Eighty-three, right?
Eighty-three, eighty-four.
Eighty-three, that's right.
Okay.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
I was a kid.
Close.
You were a kid.
Okay, uh, and your community development, um, she asked for two hundred thousand for the demolition program and we were given a two fifty because the list, uh, uh, places to be demolished is just way long, um, and so we upped it up a little bit.
And I think a component of that as well, and then we'll talk about it in a solid way, uh, like the tip fees for this whole, all the items that got up as well, uh, particularly burn all of our budget just off tip fees.
With any commercial movement, any assessments, uh, higher vacant, or, or, treatment and housing. That was pretty sizable and that was pretty expensive.
Yeah.
And, and due to their workload, um, they had asked for a new position to field supervisor. Um, I'm not sure where they had gotten their amount from to start with, but it wasn't in line with what we have as a supervisor now, and so we looked at that salary and did, did we just made adjustments.
I think what they were looking at, they have an existing field supervisor, but that supervisor's been with us for quite some time, so their salaries, of course, are inclusive of their time of service, so it wasn't the entry level paid for that position.
And then, um, another big cost that, um, instead of says tiring, we will call us that's training expected, so we added some.
So y'all are recommending the, for, the for the code enforcement officers, the field supervisor or the?
We are not recommending the two.
Okay.
We're only recommending the two fifty and then the.
The sixty.
Sixty-three for the supervisor and then the twenty thousand for the.
And then I move this down.
Um, I wanted, Michael had made a point about something I was gonna point out to y'all. You'll flip back to page four, and I think, um, Mr. Crawford's question is, um, I don't know if y'all looked at this in your pocket, but, but it, it shows you, um, some of our pick-six cities that we compare to, um, assessed valuations, tax rates, um, grocery receipts, uh, tax revenue, and then annual sales tax. So, you know, we hear a lot about Midland's tax rate is lower than ours, and it is, but their values are substantially higher than our values are. Um, they also had a substantially higher, they have a higher sales tax base as well, so, um, that's part of, you know, the difference when you talk about, well, why are our rate higher than Midland's? Well, their values are much higher, so it makes a big difference, so.
Just, just looking at just those two numbers, um, if this is all the additional money, that's twenty-three million dollars in operational revenue. Their valuation market seat seventeen billion compared to ten billion.
And then, uh, back through general fund, we'll establish this up right as we get one. So, um, uh, this, again, sixteen will show you, uh, total budget by department. And you'll see somewhat higher and lower, I mean, some things change with, um, you know, when we, when we talk about payroll, uh, if you've got a, a smaller department or, you know, in any of our departments, really, where you have experienced people that have been here twenty-five, thirty years, their pay goes significantly higher. So when we do our budget, we bud, we pull live payroll at the time that we're gonna do the budget process, right? So that we're paying what everybody that's in a position, we're, we're budgeting their salary at what their current pay is. And then for vacancies, we tend to go to the lower amount of the pay grade, which we did increase that pay grade with the four percent at ten-one and the four percent given at April. So, um, those vacancies are budgeted at those rates, okay? Because if we fill them, then those have to be in there, but it's, it's, it's budgeted at the lower part of the pay grade, okay? You hire somebody in, say you hire a firefighter, and he comes from somewhere else and has five years' experience, you're not gonna put him in at the lower level, you're gonna put him in higher up because he's got five years' experience, right? Whereas a lot of our positions, you're gonna bring them in at the bottom amount, so over time that works out by using the lower and then we budget. So if you lose somebody after twenty-five years, then it drops down if you're replacing them. So it, it works out giving us room to budget. So I know the question's been asked a lot of time about why are we budgeting for vacancies? Well, if we, do we, do we ever expect to fill all two hundred vacancies in one year? Probably not, but you have patrician issues and stuff like that that you have to work with, so.
We got some bad news for Denise, Mark, Steve. Looks like y'all are getting cut paid.
I was gonna make it known about that, I said, I wanted to comment through that, that red, uh, firefighter, so they're gonna increase, it's like, let it be known that it's actually decreased.
Yeah.
I think that was a slight decrease in, is it your act?
Sorry, no roses for y'all.
Yeah, it, it wasn't that we're cutting off pay.
Not very far ago.
No roses.
See, why do the, why do the supplemental on page sixteen not match towards fifteen? Two point two million versus two point eight?
Quarter million.
No, it's the, it's, the, the ongoing on page fifteen is a million two seventy-three, six fifty-nine. Do you see that total at the bottom?
Yeah.
On page fifteen, that's your ongoing, one million two seventy-three, and the other part of it is on page ten, it's the million dollars that's gonna go to street projects.
Oh, so these are projects?
This includes supplementals for ongoing, so that's coming out of the new year budget.
Just a quick question on the, uh, page thirteen, supplemental judges, is that the four percent increase that we gave or is that an additional rate?
No, sir, that was the increase that, uh, judges, for our biggest listening before the associate judges that worked the weekend to do the general arrangements.
Are you following it, Tom?
Do we have specific, on the supplemental, we have specific.
Do we have specific, on the supplemental, we have specifics on the street projects? We have specifics on the street projects. Is Crane gonna be part of that?
Crane, I think, is already gonna come out of our maintenance dollars, so yes, sir, that was taken, we have the funds for that.
So, are these, are these other street projects we have identified, or we have identified?
Well, the.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss five of these guys, that's where that goes.
Fighter's bid came in way over.
We're gonna have to re-mit that name.
I don't know the reading it's gonna do.
Since we're talking about projects, Mary, what we've done is obviously, we've gone back, we've looked at the specifications, we've tried to determine where we might have had some over, an over specification, if you will, and what we're finding is not a lot of savings. What we're seeing, though, is projects across the board are coming in higher. One final step that we've taken is that we've talked to a third-party consultant, said, hey, look at our information, are, is this similar to what you're seeing? Is it in line? What could be changed? And they're not giving much, they're, they're indicating that we're pretty low in line, and it's consistent with what we're seeing throughout the state.
We didn't find savings on the, moving to dirt, some of the crossroads that were, you know, that we had to, the easements came up way higher than we anticipated. So, that right there were two contributing factors right off the bat.
Yeah, drainage was probably, drainage is the one that has really driven, driven the costs of this one pretty high.
There's a lot of scene in fall.
Yeah, so the costs are up, and then that's all the costs.
I think a lot of the extra cost is, what I'm hearing is because Tech Dot has left so many budgets across the state, that, that's where a lot of the increases, you know, to the, the next dot. This is what I'm, this is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think one of our public boards people was telling us, Tech Dot said they're seeing anywhere from thirty to thirty-five percent inflationary cost on all their contracts as well. So, we put the ten million in there, nine million out of the current year we're in now, and a million out of next year's budget to, it may have to be used on budget because of how much more it came in over budget, so, that's kind of the reason. And so, I think we're, can stop for lunch, so we eat it while it's hot, it's, and then we can start with the water sewer part. That work for y'all?
Sure. Man, Cindy, I can't wait to talk about water, water sewer. Waiting all day, all day.
Well, we've gone through the general fund, so do we need to read this in the tax rate now, or do y'all want to wait till later? Will it make a difference? I don't know if it will or not.
Well, I mean, since the water.
You wanna go through the rest? Let me.
What do you think? Danny? Which direction are you looking? Here, I gotta get my numbers back out.
Sure, what they're doing, but.
Trying to get her house.
Her house?
She's got one room, it just won't cool off, so.
Yeah. Oh, I see, okay.
People from Mexico and Europe. Okay, sorry. The question is on the table. The council like to revisit how that was done, to go back and revisit the tax rate, or would you like to move on?
I'd say move on.
Move on, council?
Okay. Okay, I'm on page seventeen of your, of your retreat book. Talking about water and sewer. So, looking at our estimated outcome for twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll actually have expenditures exceeding revenues by about almost six million dollars. Most of this is due to the, well, seven point seven million of that's due to using up prior Pioneer funds. As y'all all know, we're in the process of doing line P, and so, if you look at the Pioneer revenue, and that's another thing I'll, I'll bring up right now, so Pioneer revenue is down this year. Pioneer has decided to not take any, or to use their bank, so any year that they buy more water than what the take-or-pay contract says, then they get to bank that excess, and so they are using that for June, July, and August. So, August is the year end under their contract, so they'll start back up again in September. So, we've only projected, we're only projecting eight point two million, which is, I think we've gotten in a little over seven million, and so we're hoping we'll get some in in September then. But their expenditures for this year are almost sixteen million, and that's due to the line P program, so we're spending that money this year. And after we go through water and sewer, we can, you wanna hit Pioneer then, or you wanna? Okay, so we can talk about where we are on the Pioneer fund here. So, proposed for twenty-two, twenty-three, we included a six percent increase in the water and sewer rates. If you do the calculation, you'll say, well, that doesn't look like we really increased it. Our problem is, is our industrial section, water revenue and sewer revenue has dropped tremendously. It gone up quite a bit due to coil run, and they're now using water well, or they have another water source, so that's dropped significantly. So, while we do, are doing the increases of the six percent, we do have some decreases due to that. The Pioneer contract is budgeted at nine and a half. Their take-or-pay, at this point, is at eleven point five, but they still have bank available, and we think that they'll utilize that somewhat, so, so we have a total of sixteen ninety-nine eighty-seven. Our expenditures, personnel services up some, by others, we actually have a little bit of a decrease in capital outlay, and then our general administrative fees, grocery receipt payment, blue tax, our debt service, as you can see compared to last year, is up, and that's by the, the additional payment for the new debt, and then again, Pioneer contract expenditures. We budget those at revenues equals expenditures, because right now, we don't rely on the Pioneer money for operations of the water sewer system, it's usually for additional projects, not for the day-to-day operations, and so we don't budget to gain off of that, okay? So, right now, and we awarded six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in supplementals ongoing, so we're budgeting in the whole one point four million, and that is, and we hope to catch that up next year when we do kind of the second half of the increase for the debt service payment. And so, that doesn't mean that that portion has to increase every year from now on out, because your debt service payments will stay steady until you do another issuance of debt, right? So, we're splitting that six point four three percent kind of between the two years, so we'll take three and a half this year and do three next year, and hopefully we get it covered by then, okay? The next page shows you some of the changes, so you'll see here where our single-family revenue will go up, multi-family commercial, and then we have this big decrease for industrial. Same with the sewer revenue, so total changing revenue of almost two point three million. And then below, we have our expense changes, including the four percent that was given in April, and then on the next page, services changes total about five hundred and seventy thousand. The new debt service change is two point seven million, that's pretty large change. So, a total of four and a half million. And let's cover supplementals and, and what the rate does.
On the industrial, on page eighteen?
Uh huh.
That's mostly fire here, most?
No, 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 that's mostly coil run.
Okay.
What kind of revenue sources, water source they find, do you know?
We understand it's a water wells. I mean, for years, they were not taking, but like their office driven water from us, then they had lost a water source, and so then escalated up, and now it's come back down.
Can't believe they got a water well to reset, especially with all those new, all that crypto mining out there.
Yeah.
All the electricity they're using, I can't imagine. Yeah, that's kind of odd.
Do you think that they may be coming back, bringing more water from us?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, I know a water well in town that runs.
Well, they probably have some.
I'm sure it's one.
Yeah, it still has a lot of water.
And before, it was some water wells in the, below Amarillo that by the way, should be.
Oh, really?
I think, oh, we, we was in on, was in on that too.
Oh, okay, that makes more sense.
Do you think that they're saying it's not gonna come back to us?
We don't have to call those, crypto mining companies out there.
Yeah.
We, those are in the city, right?
I'm sorry?
Coil runs in the city?
It's in the Dusso district.
Dusso district. Are we not getting, are we getting fees off those crypto mining units? A hundred of them out there.
We would get, we would give up whatever typical property.
Right, but we don't have, we don't know if that is this. Who gives us that number?
The appraisal district. Well, we actually hire somebody that does an assessment of the value of our industrial contract. It's, he's been carrying the core.
So, do we, do we have a contractor?
Where?
With the people who do the crypto mining?
I don't care that way.
They do not sign a industrial issue contract for that, crypto.
No, not at all.
How do they, how do they operate out there?
Yeah, I didn't realize they were out there. Someone told me, I hadn't verified.
Verification. I drove out there and looked, they're building, they look like C-Compass.
What's crypto mining?
Don't even start that.
Oh, is it a law? It's a law.
I don't understand it.
Okay.
I don't understand.
I don't, I really don't, I didn't know what.
It takes a, two sessions and a test afterwards.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take that test, no.
The guys that've been paid will probably tell you better than I can what it is. You did, you know, drive, I go up, coil running, I looked, when I was out there last night, they were building pads, and I was furious.
We don't need one to talk about that business.
Only reason I bring it up, Cindy, because I thought it was, caught my eye on it, was twenty-seven million dollar building permit, twenty-seven, yeah, I couldn't figure out what was costing twenty-seven million dollars, but I went over and looked, and that's what it is.
Okay, we'll follow.
Yeah, we do.
Cindy, real quick, before you. Back on page seventeen, on the other, the other revenue, two thousand, what is that? What's the other revenue?
It's still minor. It is minor, I'm trying to think of this.
It's a big, you know.
Oh, it's, it's actually some pro-rata money that we're collecting in one of our water sewer construction funds. Okay. Okay, so, looking at supplementals for water sewer, we had to increase our billing and collection mail costs, but y'all know the cost of, the stamps are going up, plus when we switched to munis for billing, now they go out in envelopes instead of the little postcards, which we were probably gonna have to change from the postcards anyway, because it looks like you're putting out some new guidelines on private information, so, but anyway, we've seen a real increase, and then the projected increase in this thing, so.
Was there a request to requalify meter readers?
They're wanting to reclassify them from meter readers to field reps, and it's a small change in pay, and as you look throughout this, most of any reclassifications with salaries, we were waiting until the study was done before we approved any of those top six. So, that's why we did not approve them.
The, the study that we're engaging in is not just the compensation, it's the classification study as well.
They'll be reviewing all our job descriptions. So, then down in laboratory, we had, we gave them a twenty thousand ongoing for increased cost of chemicals and supplies, again, under water treatment, we had to increase chemicals three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. We had some increase in our TCEQ, annual water registration fees, and certifying fees increased for water treatment. Oh, so there are about three of these, the Yukon valves, the Goerder pump station, and the elevator repair. This is all right at the water treatment plant, and these items were not included in the whole renovation at the water treatment plant, but we have the contingency that's there with the water treatment plant, so we're either gonna look to there, or they're gonna use their water maintenance money for that, so that's being bucketed out of what we call other sources.
Are these the operator DCs, et cetera?
Yeah.
Requests for new positions?
Those are requests for new positions.
That we're not looking at right now?
We're not looking at right now, I mean, we didn't feel like we got a real justification for needing those yet, so we were gonna maybe have, be looking at their workload and stuff, and they're supposed to be, we'll build that in and see if we've got excess over time with do we, with the operators we have, and whether that's really necessary or not.
Yeah, just, not that, I guess it really matters to this, but is Rip the only Class A operator we have?
Bio.
Bio.
They have the two, or three that are classy.
I was just kind of curious, because I know Rip's gotta be getting close to retirement.
Yeah, and some of these things here are in relation to like a vehicle form and different things, so all of that was put aside until we get determinants really necessary that that's, those positions are needed.
Is this TCEQ registration fee, is that because they've gone up, or what is?
Yeah.
May I ask about that too?
Shame on you.
That's the amount that's gone up?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's based on, I think there's some component that's based on machine and stuff too.
It's whatever they want it to be.
Under Bob Darrington, the utilities had asked to do a condition assessment of Under Bob Darrington, the utilities had asked to do a condition assessment evaluation and master plan of the Bob Darrington plant. This is their estimated cost of maybe $250,000. Right now, we were looking at maybe that be something that could be paid out of Pioneer Funds. That's why we put it under other sources. Now, we're right in the middle of trying to get the water treatment plant going. I'm not sure, I think this study would tell us how critical the Bob Darrington plant would be, how far down the road we have on that. So I do think it's absolutely something we need to do. I don't know that it has to be done immediately, but if it's going to be done, that's a source of funds that we could do. We didn't think that we should be taking this out of budget.
The Darrington plant's nearing 40 years old?
It's built in the early 90s.
Early 90s?
That's what I remember.
See, I thought it was built in the early 80s, but.
I think it was like 90s, late 90s, early 90s, that's what I remember. It's only 40.
That may be. I don't think so.
We did, in the ongoing, we had to increase chemicals and insecticides, and we had to increase some tipping fees there as well. I think they called that sludge, they have to take out of there, and it goes to the line. The, under distribution, we did, there was some water sewer licensing that had, these four employees had accomplished. And, or no, this is to pay for them to do the classes for that. So that's why it's coming out of our one-time. So we only did 12,000 out of one time, and 611,597 out of monthly.
Mark, someone else asked a question on TCEQ. So that is based on the number of connections? So we increased the connections so that?
Okay, so your fees go up.
On page 21, shows you our water sewer rates, history of increases that have been done. And then, again, we're proposing a 6% increase, the regular 2.5 plus 3.5 to start covering the new debt. The effect that this would have on water and sewer per gallon usage, we just do 5,000 and 10,000 gallons, you can see those amounts there. So combined, 218 and 132 would be $3.50. And for a bigger user, that would be. Six of five. And I will remind y'all that we do have lower, the rates for elderly and disabled are lower than the, this is single-family rates. So it would still be an increase to them, that their rates are lower. I think currently, currently, our base rate for residential is $19.82, and for seniors and disabled, it's $12.64. So they get quite a bit of a break.
At 65 and over?
You know, we're on it tiers. So you have a base rate, and then after 2,000 gallons, it's a price per 1,000 gallons up to 10. And once you go over 10, it ladders up again another rate from 10 till, from 11 to 20,000 gallons. So we increase those increments as well at 6%. So it's across the board, 6%. So you want to talk about Pioneer for a minute? Did I give y'all the Pioneer package? I did. So this gives you a history of Pioneer, since we started that contract. The contract was actually signed in '14, and they had a year to start the process, and we actually ended up delaying it a year. So it really didn't, the initiation date was in August of 2016. And so that's when we started taking in revenue. This, the green lines tells you basically the net position at the end of each fiscal year. But I'll point out, like your revenues, 2017 was 9.6, it jumped up to 11.4 the next year, 11.3 the next year. You go to 2020 revenues, and this was during COVID, and it dropped down to 8.5. That's because they utilized part of their bank that they had. Then they went back up in '21 to almost 11.8 million. And then again, this year, they're going to take, utilize some of that bank. I think their, their taker pay amount is almost 11.5 million, it's 11 million 451 a year. And that'll stay steady throughout the rest of the contract. We did have some increase, there was an increase at year six, and there won't be another increase until the end of the contract. And they have first rights to extend the contract or to let it go. And that would be in August of 2027. I think y'all are all aware that they did a deal with the city of Midland. They actually put in the capital upfront to build a new water treatment plant over there. And so they're now taking water off of that, which is much cheaper to them because it's getting back their investment that they made upfront. So I think once they exhaust their overage with us, then they'll probably just take it, you know, just take up to the taker pay, the taker pay now, of 11.4. So I've taken this through June 30th of '22, that's the pink. I did want to point out that right under the green for available balance, about the middle of the page, 18 million through 28, we had a return of our unused PO from Corolla. This was on the water treatment plant design. You know, originally, that PO was included, designed to include an RO plant. And when we decided not to do that, that money was to come, to be released out of the PO. So that has been done, 3.9 million. So at the end of June 30, 2022, looks like the balance is about 36.2 million, almost 2 million. We still have encumbered with Kenley Horn, an outstanding PO. We put a hold on that two years ago, I guess. This was to design the northeast and southwest water extension. That's basically kind of taking it somewhat outside our current city limits.
The primary reason we put that on hold is because of the assistance issue. The reality is that that is an area that is not currently in the city limits of our business. And until this issue is resolved, if we went ahead and make that investment, there would be tens of millions of dollars in there that we don't know ultimately before we gain sales tax benefits. So that's kind of just on hold.
How far out southwest of this?
Mayor, that would go out, on the southwest side, would go out past Halliburton, is that?
Pro the west?
Pro the west, yes. And it would also, when we were looking at that design, it would also bring another water line from the loop to connect down further south as well. You know where Walmart is at, on the west loop? There's a line that would go down there as well. That would expand availability out west. Northwest water system, quite frankly, went up to almost to Gardale, or County Stock, and would serve up in the south and northeast route.
The other encumbrance is just the remainder of the line P at 4.4 million. We think they'll be close to done with line P by fiscal year end. So before it opens in September, they'll be finished with line P. So that, taking those encumbrances out, leaves you an available value balance of 29.8 million. And so we have sewer line Q, this is the, the design is already paid for. This is 20 million estimate on line Q. And that's Tom's today's estimate, so I think it might be closer to what happens. And then if y'all are okay with going forward with the Bob Darrington plant's condition assessment, this is where we had put to fund that out of the 1.25. So that would lead you then out of what we have currently, 8.6. And then, of course, your upcoming year budgeted amount of 9.5 million. So that kind of gives you an idea of what's available in Pioneer.
Any questions about, if I know Bob Darrington plant assessment assessment of line Q?
Executive system.
Mayor, it would be a top to bottom review of the facility condition to determine areas of material concern.
Disguising with that maximum?
Similar to what we did whenever, 2016, when we did the water treatment plant.
Isn't it pretty much a maximum capacity?
It's.
Is it overload, mayor, as I said?
No, I mean, the reality is that there's always maintenance on that facility. The facility was built in probably the early 90s. We've done some major rehab, component here and there. But we're talking about waste materials, so that's going to be a lot more corrosive to everything up there. So I think from the work's perspective, we did some of the maintenance issues and that. Can you just really gauge, do you want to hard look at that?
And I think part of it is electrical too. The electrical's pretty, just like we saw with the water treatment plant, that's a big part of what's being done in the water treatment plant rehab. So there's been some work done on it, but I think that's one of their.
If we approve this, how long will it take to do a study like that?
Five to eight years.
Twelve days and months.
Twelve days and months.
Line Q, of course, as you know, is a line that will go to significant east of our community, that will handle any growth that may come within our ETJ, because we can only go so far now on our ETJ, and we're pretty well there. So this would have carried that sewer load, or really anything east of Mission Ranch, east of Mission. And going from about PI 20 up to Parksville, the Parksville area.
Will it go almost to Gardale?
It will go to the very top of where the city limits is today. So it's always south of Gardale.
Anything else on the Pioneer, please? Any questions or discussion you want to have on that?
Any further discussion?
Any discussion, discussion on the water sewer rate increase? I think y'all all seem pretty resolved to the fact that that pretty much has happened.
It's got to happen.
Okay, I'm going to check that out. Okay, solid waste. Um, solid waste, we think we'll net about 800,000 in the current fiscal year. We are going to see some increases in their budget next year. We did institute a 3.5%, so we increased it an additional percent, mostly because our tipping fees are going up. And we feel like the, we're having an increase somewhat of maintenance on the vehicles and stuff, so that adds to their cost for equipment service, and then fuel costs. And they had asked for some supplementals to the tune of a million dollars that we felt were pretty important, and we'll look at those in a second. So basically, the increased budget gets us to 16 million 356. And there is the added cost of the salary, 4% we did in April as well. And so that gets us expenditures of 16,337, so it's like a $19,000 difference.
Do you know about what that will calculate, that 3.5%?
Yes, if you look on page 25. And on page 24 is the supplemental request that they had. So they had, they have a part-time clerk position request, and I think we, oh, that's K O B, I'm sorry. We think they have room in their budget to, they wanted to add that position. I think we have already, part-time is 1,000 hours or less a year.
Q.
Yes. But we are increasing their advertising. Part of this is just more awareness of our letter, and they're doing a lot more programs. And also, I think with what we saw with the solid waste study, you know, trying to get it out there more about, you know, solid waste, and how you need to be disposing of it, and all the things that we thought we could do at a relatively low cost, includes some of that as well. So under the actual solid waste department, they were asking for two or three driver positions, and then they wanted to order two new refuge trucks because of the expanding coverage that we're doing with houses being built all the time. So they actually got, we ordered a new articulated truck last year. Oh yeah, we replaced one, and then got a new one last year. So the driver position, one of the driver positions is for that. And so we allowed the 36,279 ongoing for that position. The other two positions were for adding new trucks. Well, we're going to buy one truck. Trucks are 20, are these, are these out 24 months, 18, 24 months, to even get them in? So we didn't feel like we needed to give them the positions yet, because we don't have the trucks. So we are going to order one truck, get it in, and then we'll fill that. So it'll probably be next year before we even. So it'll probably be next year before we even need the position to drop the truck. This, we gave them a hundred and ninety-eight thousand ongoing that was necessary. This is to maintain and replace the actual dumpsters. All of that cost has gone up on buying new dumpsters or replacing parts on them. They had a small increase in wearing apparel. And then another big line item for them, the biggest, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand was due to the tipping fee increase at the one. And that's a combination of their rate increase and just increased tonnage that's going through. So we have a total of, oh, a hundred and, so that had, there's a shredder building out there. I don't know if any of y'all have ever been there. I went and saw it for the first time two weeks ago. Huge, big building. And it's, the roof is really bad on it, it leaks. And so we've been looking at this building for several years trying to determine what condition it really is. The walls seem to be fairly stable. And you guys can probably talk about this better than I can.
So the shredder building is a building that's located on the back lot of where the trash trucks park. It's like, we house, we used to house supervisor out there, but the office component of it was two stories, so it wasn't easy accessible. We had some water damage issues that created, so we don't allow the staff to work in those office spaces anymore. That's also an area where we sort out much of the recycling materials, so plastic bottles, cardboard, things of that nature. It also has a bay where we do some mechanics, mechanic work out there. And then it also has one of our contractors who does tire repairs. He stays pretty busy with tire repairs up there. So it's a pretty useful facility. However, the building itself is not in great condition at all. We have now put trailers outside of the building to house our admin staff that work out of there. Because again, the office space is not, not good. The building itself is a fairly large building. It's got supports in the center. And if you get on that, on that floor, you will notice that the floor is starting to sink. Apparently, there used to be a pit in there that they used to shred material. And they filled that in, but apparently they didn't do a good job as the floor started to sink. So now what we've got is a roof that's probably pretty compromised, like we know it's compromised. Not only does it leak, but it's kind of sinking in. So what they wanted, what rather, our initial discussion was having that building replaced. And looking at the exterior of the structure, that seems to be, seems to be pretty solid. And so in talking to Tom and his staff, they all agreed that probably what would be more appropriate for us to really understand whether or not that facility is salvageable is to do a study to determine its condition, its reusability, or if it's better just to tear it down completely. We thought that that might be money well spent because if we don't have to build a brand new facility and can reshore or re-support this one in such a way that we can use, use it, the exterior is good, we maybe just look at some office space and a new roof as opposed to a entire new building.
So would it take three million dollars to...
That's an estimate that they turned, no, we only gave them a hundred. They gave us an estimate of three million to tear the old one down and build a new one. And in today's world, we don't think three million is enough.
That was several years ago. I came up with that probably. Because I did one for the roof, then for the building. Now, the staff doesn't have any use, when do they use your restroom? That used to be housing all the restrooms.
Yeah, so they've got, they've got some trailers out there for another building there.
Yeah. But they don't have any, any facility. What would the study do just to be able to assess whether the building is reusable?
Yes, sir.
How much would it be?
Oh, we, we had estimated the cost of what, did we think it would be less, Mayor?
For the study?
For the study.
I saw the building.
Yeah.
I just think you just tear that sucker down, build up from that building, and replace, you know, just one story and give them all their, you know, office space, break room, restroom, save that hundred fifty thousand to redo. Because that roof is definitely compromised, I looked at it.
Yeah.
And it, there's not so much to deck when you look at the wrought iron, it's bent. There's no salvage in that. And now is a structural situation. If there was a private sector, it wouldn't be inhabitable. And we're doing the, the recycling out of there. So where do they, do they go back over, do they go over to the...
Yeah, so they'll bail, they've got the bailer in there.
Yeah.
So they'll bail either the plastics or the cardboard.
But they, but they're dumping it right now and sorting through this, so what happens to, where does, where do, where do our trucks now start dumping for the recyclables? And we went over to the time machine to get, vacate the building?
Yeah, so if we, if we're not dumping it in the shredder building, we're dumping it behind the time machine.
Okay, so that's where they'll, okay. So we built, we, we arrived at a building for a new facility, they'll still continue to do it out back and not have an access?
Yeah, so, so the recycling is another question, right? So we were talking about the solid waste master plan. We, you council had given us direction to kind of put that back out there in our group for recycling. And so we're working on repairing that and we're gonna look at a couple of options. But ultimately, if we're gonna get a contractor to do that, we'd like for them to either take it to their facility and not, no longer.
Not no longer use it. What about that other facility, that base, base disposal, their facility?
Well, they're, they're one of the ones that we had talked to previously about providing recycling services. So we would definitely go to those guys and anybody else who might come usually.
Okay.
I mean, if we determine that we want to just turn that building down and rebuild the building, it's probably something that's gonna have to come out of general fund money because there's only four million, well over four million in the fund balance in the solid waste. So there's not many available to do that.
Unless you're willing to look at that building and take a...
Unless you wanna raise rates. So that's part of the dilemma we were looking at with, you know. And, you know, I think it was Jesse and their guys that told us outside structure is, so we just didn't know what it would take to replace a roof and shore up the floor, didn't think that it would be really done.
What do y'all think?
So it sounds like you pretty much know that that building is gonna need to be demolished and built up again.
Well, we'd like, we'd like someone, like a structural engineer to look at it. We'd like an architect to look at it to tell us if we're certain. It's been in that condition the way it is today, the way it's on there for several years. It's got a municipal stakeout and, yeah, several of them.
It's an open facility, you got trash in there, you know, a lot of broken stuff like that. I saw the, I saw the structure of the building. So what they'll do is they'll look at the outside structure, which is, it's a precast and a cement facility. So, you know, all the, the support beams are on the outside. You could go in there, you have to go in there, take all up, start rebuilding. That, there's something happening in the process. The floor is an inbuilt process, but your rehab building at this point compromises. We have an additional hundred fifty thousand plus, whatever the estimated cost is gonna be, which is not gonna be cheap. And so either way, it's gonna be a hefty, hefty price, whether you just worry about tearing down the building and go with the facility, you don't have to go back to cement precast.
No, I think they were talking metal building.
Metal's going to metal, because right now they're, they're, they're in, they're in parts. You know, so you can, again, reduce your cost to a metal building, it's gonna be a little bit more space. In fact, with the air conditioning ready to go, it'd be a lot, bigger improvement than what they have right now as far as portable.
Years in, I would have to come up with a general fund, because there's no money in the solid waste.
If you do, if you do a study, rest of me, it's like everything else, it seems like we're, you know, twelve months to eighteen months, twenty-four months. So, you know.
You know, we wouldn't think that getting a structural engineer and getting a, this would necessarily take that long there. So Tom has already reached out to one or two firms.
Here locally?
They're local, sir.
Would they do the work after the assessment study?
No, these are engineering firms, so they would do the analysis.
Just to see which way to go.
So on what he's talked about, if the building needs to be replaced, are they still wanting to have a bay for their truck?
So what would happen is if we're gonna replace that building, we would almost have to build another building in a different location and allow them to continue to function. And once the new building is over, we need that structure.
And so if we did not, if, if the council chose not to do anything different on recycling than what we are doing today, then if we take that building down, that diminishes their effectiveness on sorting?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're either have to find another place, there's not another cover.
Right.
If they do anything, it would have to be outside, and that would be an issue, preferably especially for rates. Because the time machine building itself is relatively small.
Right.
There's not a whole lot of content, that's why it was built over there.
I think they think that right now we have how many bays?
There's four bays that location now.
On each side, right?
Right, each side.
Okay.
Well, they're pulled through.
Right. So that, I think they thought they could cut that down some as long as the recycling is no longer being done in there, right? Because that takes up quite a bit of space. Then they would have sufficient room to do, have a bay for the tire contractor, and then a bay for them to work on, a bay or two for them to work on. They do some small maintenance stuff on it there so that they can keep, it's a long way from there to equip, to equipment service. So they can do stuff there, it saves a lot.
And then also, any, any new building, whether it's this one we have or new, would also have office space.
I kind of just hate to see throw good money at bad. Buildings that are that old, you know, try to condition them sometimes, more expensive than this. During a different duration, my opinion.
Is there enough manor to keep Kerwin operating while we're keeping a new one?
We think so, Mark.
They would have to kind of regrout how they go in through the, yeah, their entrance that, they said they could make that work. But they would have to, you can't tear it down and not completely replace the design.
There's a good chance of whatever we get as far as, you know, where it's based, somebody else, if they run their, you know, our facility straight to their facility, it'll, you know, doing on site means that we utilize the facility we have, and we have the ability. So that's my hopes and points, and some of that, some steps on this, even if it's just a little bit more. We don't have to utilize our people, our man in order to, you know, leave a sort. Right now, they're doing this cart, if I'm not correct. So, but do you have any idea when that thing's gonna come online as far as basic disposal? A little landfill?
Not sure, Mayor.
They've been in the process of getting all the licenses.
Yeah, they've been doing that for several years now.
So this building has a significant landfill? I just don't know what their capacity is.
You know, we talked, they have a pretty good sizable capacity.
Yeah, I've been wanting to get a good fit about to go to and look at their things, what they're interested in recycling. And increase it down more. It vacates us of using our facility. I think it's worth, and it uses that building, building facility for, and disluminates that building. Now, we may send ourselves another two, five, thirty years without building. Building, that's where I stand, I look at it, when visited the facility, that they're probably stressed with the, their building's in bad shape. It's been like that, and exposed and it continues to deteriorate, you know, whether it's cold or heat, it still contrasts. And in the way, it's gonna be expensive. And it can get expensive trying to regrow, it's just a little, and the cost is on the bottom.
Yes, the question, Mayor, maybe you want us to...
Continue the study.
Continue with the study or not? I think as far as the build, if it's, if it's not, and it's just go towards a new building, then maybe that's something that, I don't know, you can budget it now or do a budget amendment once we can get, you know, full design of a building and what it's gonna cost to put in a new building and tear it down. Because we don't think forty million is enough.
Who's the square foot of Jones Building?
I bet we can pull it up. It's pretty good size.
Well, I just hate throwing good money at something bad. You know, it's, it's not a building that's not gonna be used every day. So, you know, it's probably, if it's usefulness, it's probably time.
Tear it down.
You know, let's don't take Ken down the road one more time, let's need to be fixed. We have to buy the building fixed.
I'm just focusing on getting the, you know.
I would say, you know, assessing, we'll use a pretty, decide the extension of utilities, find a meaningful sign, and concentrate on that. Let it continue operating by closing the building.
You know, what other thought might be, the council desires to see the new building, keep the same one fifty and put that toward the design and the structure?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Instead of putting, and take it back and turn around and say, hey, when you do it, now we got one fifty in ten, but...
So it's not like we can tear, use that foundation because it's sinking, right?
Only in the center.
Only in the center. But she's gonna put a rail up and you walk around.
Yeah, aside from you.
Speak to the wall.
If you go out there, none of the, you don't see cracks, you don't see any walls. So that's also the foundation, at least a lot of the perimeter is in this shape. You have to remember, the only part that's sinking is the center, but there was a hole in the center. None of the other foundations sink, only one is center.
Isn't that the area where we used to have fire control?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, because they actually crushed a lot of the garbage down, shredded it down in the rod and, yeah, sparks, you can tell that on fire. Do you make a pink call or something? Okay, well, where do we put it towards the line?
Councilmember's fault, it's just under seventeen thousand square feet.
Well, do you think one fifty is a good amount for a design based on what we're seeing recently?
It'll get us started.
Don't forget Taj Mahal.
Yeah, we're, we're telling them no Taj. And it'll just be single level.
Single level.
So that there's no ADA requirement for an elevator or something like that.
I was just going, that explains, yeah.
Typically, your architecture fees are eight percent, with three million dollar building, it's two hundred and forty thousand.
We have real estate vital to put another building?
Yes, certainly. So typically, I'm sorry, I said, I'm, the council...
So typically, architecture fees are about eight percent of a construction project. And so based on a three million dollar construction budget, it'd be about two hundred and forty thousand for design fees.
We know it's not gonna be free.
I should have put on that one, sorry.
We, we can increase that amount as a one time out of the current budget if we need to.
That could go towards the design?
Yes.
Why can't they do that with the fund balance? Why can't they give a little bit of amount out of the fund balance?
Well, our projected income for the current year is about, is about eight hundred thousand. So we could increase this time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So we all want to double it to three hundred thousand?
For the design?
For the design, to affect the... For the design, to 250, 250, kind of is the 300,000.
They're taking out the fund balance?
About 275.
275?
I'm just thinking, if it's 3 million, it's probably going to be 4, and 8% of 4 is 3.2, we get some more, I don't know.
What did you say, 230?
75. Yeah, 275, I'm just thinking, we know it's not going to be, I think we know it's not going to be, it should be, it should be. It's like, you ought to at least go reasonably sound, just my opinion.
It's just money, right?
Yeah, it's money. Well, you know, a million here, a million there, after a while, you're talking real money.
Yeah, we really are. So shall we lay that 150, y'all, and increase it?
Increase 350.
To what?
250.
250. Got that, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then we've already looked at this, but the page is just reflecting the increase. We might go fast, no worry. Stormwater.
What do you mean with that?
Huh?
What do you mean with that?
You're okay with that? Okay, stormwater. Um, not much change in the budget, huh?
Where did that come from? When it rains?
When it rains?
Yeah, okay, I think we cut this one out.
No, that's, yeah, that's what it's for. So the only thing I'll mention here is the budget's relatively the same to prior year. They were going to point out in the current year estimated, we had that 2 million transfer out that went to the detention basin project out there by Fodri, so that transfer's been made. On to 28, Equipment Services Fund. So we had an increase in our rental revenues here, a big part of that's fuel, I believe, and an increase somewhat in our supplies. You know, everything goes out, parts and supplies for the vehicle maintenance stuff. And so we're looking at 15 million total revenues. We have a, quite a number of equipment replacements to do this year, 8.3 million. So that brings expenditures to 17 millions, we'll actually be spending more than we're taking in. That's not unusual. The rental rate's based on when the vehicles need to be replaced and the expenses related to those. Replacement is based on time of the vehicle and when it needs to be replaced, so they don't always rent the same. And I think on page 30 is a listing of, well, it's the number of vehicles that are being replaced with that.
Let me ask a question, so right now, we're, maybe we already answered that one, starting with the, the expenditures for replacement of what we're seeing here on the list, we have, we know we're looking at a maximum of 24 months out, still using these vehicles, so are we, do we up that schedule, anticipation on that? Or are we getting to the point where we're at the end, end of life cycle for the vehicle, and now we're compromising because we have an additional 24 months? Can we take that into consideration?
Yes, sir, so we do, can definitely put that consideration, and what we are seeing in part of those increased maintenance costs is we are having to put more tires, more brakes, more belts on these vehicles to keep them running, it's over that exchange period.
So we're going to continue to see this cost goes up as we wait for replacement?
Correct, and that's one of the reasons that, I believe tonight, the ambulances that we're bringing, they're actually part of this replacement list for October, but we're wanting to order now because of the time it's taking to get those.
Locking in prices also.
Locking in prices and trying to get ahead of those increased maintenance costs.
Put a balance in that.
Yeah, and we'll be doing that more than just ambulances today, so. The next page is the Information Technology Fund. There's a pretty significant increase in the technology charges here. Software costs are keep going up on it, and that shows up in your maintenance line item. So we had an increase there, we also have some additional computer replacements that we're doing this year. Typically, we, that's around 400,000, this year it's close to 600,000. So revenues of 5.5, expenditures of 5.3 per year.
Is that increased employment or increased cost of?
Increased cost of computers and more computers than normal that we're replacing.
Well, maybe about, actually another increasing program.
Yeah, we're fixing to replace this because it just warped on, never seen a computer warp on.
I don't know if it's more short in time, but just more, what's going to do for replacement?
Yes.
Yeah, better here than on the plane. I was worried for my hatch, because it was on the back.
And there was a couple of supplemental requests that IT had on page 33. And we're needing to upgrade our core switches. And, yeah.
Core switch, what's a core switch?
Somebody tell us what a core switch is.
We might have to Google that, because I'm either thinking that's the internet switches or something different.
All of the computers that are, you know, I'll give you an example of municipal court, there's a core switch that's in there, so all of the city network is coming from fiber, from ID, from municipal plaza into municipal court, and then all of the computers connect to that switch, and that provides the network to that building. So there's core switches like that in every building that the network goes out of.
Oh, so it handles the traffic, the transport.
Gateway.
Gateway to the network, yeah.
Gateway to the network.
It's also called a hub.
Yep, yeah, it's those big racks, though, that have like a 30 on each.
How you compare the switch position with the backbone physical core network?
Well, so then if you know what core switches are, we got to upgrade our leaf switches, too.
Yeah, I love that. Leaf switches are popular devices used by data centers to aggregate traffic from server nodes, and they connect to the core of the network.
And so this is kind of a two-year project for them to do. So we're funding 315,000 this year, and then we'll fund the others next year. And this is coming out of their fund, out of their fund balance, right?
Do this every two years? Every two years, it's a percent?
No, no, this project is on the leaf switches. It's 630,000, so we're doing half of it this year, we'll do half this year. Risk management. It's been very fortunate, our management can remember not a great long time ago, where that's kind of gotten a hole because the clings just escalate. We are not, at this time, proposing any increases in premium. As y'all all know, the employees pay nothing. They pay for the bronze plan. If they have dependents, then they have a small payment for that, like 75,000. Yeah, it's pretty minimal, if you have children.
Like monthly?
Monthly, 17.
Yeah, it's...
Basically 20 bucks.
Yeah, there is not another taxing entity in this county that charges zero to them. We're the only one left that doesn't charge anything. Yeah, and one of the things that we're doing some study on is, you know, hand in hand with our medical dental is also your OPEB liability. And we're doing some studying, looking at retiree costs for pre-65, because it's 65 Medicare ticks in and we become secondary Medicare. So retiring costs versus retired premiums, and seeing if we need to do an adjustment there. The plan here for our medical dental actually runs on a calendar year. So if we feel like there needs to be any increase there, then it might be something that we ask for approval when we're renewing our, all of our insurance policies in December. We all come to start. Right now, we're budgeting ready venue again at 13.7, our expenses are at 13.608. This did include some supplemental increases, and they're all just premium increases that we're giving from our provider, that's on page 36. Our workers' comp cost, an increase of 20,000, excess liability premium of 60,000, and property insurance of almost 92,000 dollars. And those are new increases that we got last year. So we covered on tour the portion of last year out of that bucket, but we're increasing this projected budget. Sure will have another increase coming along.
And the other thing I don't see worse, worse is stop loss premium for the medical plan. Is it included in your excess premium by COVID year?
I guess we did have an increase with that one, this is workers' comp, excess liability.
Well, it wouldn't come due to the planning or the end of the year, but...
Yeah, but they didn't propose an increase on that.
Okay.
That's surprising.
That would be surprising with all the COVID stuff.
Yeah.
Don't you think that the, that the stop loss premium would be going up?
And your line item benefits, the reason that amount's so high, that's where your drug costs are, your prescription costs are. And then medical dental plans is basically doctor, hospital, visit, all of them. And just as a sidebar for that, we did have the directoratization posted. It's been posted for a couple of weeks now, we've gotten 34 applications for this clinic, for the clinic, I'm sorry, for the clinic.
So are y'all going to fill that one before you start filling the line?
Yeah, we want that person to be able to help and take the necessary stuff.
And you have several good applications?
We have some, we're looking for more.
And I think they were strategically setting out some, to some additional sites for just medical. Off course, on page 37. The, off course, it's getting better, it's getting out of the hole.
A big hole?
Yeah, it's, it's getting better. Right? Uh, that's real funny.
Maybe you go and talk to Pineda and says they'll give us 55 million to do, our off course like they did post bar.
Well, what do you say, yeah?
Or don't give oxygen a chance.
Yeah, they come down to UC and ask for that, and they always should approach them about what you're doing. Revenues are pretty much the same. We did increase the general fund transfer by 100,000, that's also reflecting general funds, still.
Why do you increase 100,000?
A couple of things. We did give them a one-time supplemental of 190,000 due to some issues out at the golf course. I think everybody's kind of aware, we're trying to do a turf and irrigation reestablishment program, that's 150,000. And some green protective netting, that's due to the new overpass going up. You know, it runs right along beside the golf course. We also had some ongoing increases for chemicals and insecticides and special services. Is that what we're choosing for our... So we have a contract right now with a superintendent. He used to be the superintendent, but he's helping us out now until we can get a superintendent hired because we, the golf pro led and the superintendent led, so. So we felt like, you know, they were making progress, we didn't want to slow down their progress, so. It's not, I don't think we intend for it to be ongoing at that level, that we would drop it back down to 400,000 this year.
That park, the golf park, that's a tricky question, right? I know there are, I know there are days of problems.
Right, and, right, and there, have they decided on their new parks?
Yes, we have a golf course advisory board meeting in August, and at that meeting, we're going to take a recommendation of parks to purchase, and then we get the recommendation from the advisory board, and then bring it to council for final approval.
Are you looking to buy them or lease them?
Get them.
Do they stay electric or gas?
It's recommended that we go gas. We found that we can pull more routes out of them, we've been working with the consultants that are selling the cars, and we looked at the lithium ion batteries, and those of course last longer, similar to the new ones, but they're probably a bit more expensive, newer technology, so we're recommending to go with gas.
I'm going to tell the president that we're going to do a possible, a possible...
And we've got 15 gas units out there now, and we haven't had issues from the customers that are using them, so I think that's been...
Yeah, we have both cars. I would have yes both cars.
I'd actually look at leasing, you know, leasing program, look at it. Place complete every three years, putting out that kind of tag, I think you'll find, I think you'll find advocates. I know that, I know easygoing, club car both have those kind of programs, they change the whole thing.
Yeah, and this kind of works along the lines, because they take in all the trade, so all our old ones, they take back, and then we pay the...
We're also been told that to the gas, that there's a typical, typically a higher resale value for those rather than the batting operator who else produces funds for that work.
I like the gas, and I mean, I certainly don't want golf courses, because that would make you think that I'm like golf, but we have a golf course, golf club, there's gas, and it's a, it's a boss.
Do we need a break yet, or y'all?
Yes.
You do, you need a break?
Just five minutes, Cindy, just five minutes.
Five minutes.
That's your mark.
Oh, I can wait, I know. Are we already there? I just have to park.
There's not really much to talk about, page 40.
We can talk about math.
Earlier, we were talking about the Gulf Derrington plant, so the original plant was built in 1976. Before that, we were using what is now Gulf Coast, I was a city treatment facility, and it was expanded in 1990.
Expanded.
See, because I remember, back in the olden days, when I worked in personnel, it was, I'd go to the tree plant out on Nixon, yeah, the old one. And then they had built the Derrington plant before, I thought they were building it before I went to fire for them, and that was in 1990, so.
Okay, the debt service on page 40, I mean, there's a little bit of changes due to the changes in the past. As y'all will see, we, uh, we paid off the remainder of the two thousand and thirteen COs. But they were refunded, this is one of the issues we refunded, and we refunded it with the two thousand and seventeen refunding issue. So where that one comes off, and so it's a decrease of two point three million, that means our payments go up on the refunding issue by two point three. Okay. It's one of those racks that we've done, we've done refunds before. And, um, other than that, there's no significant changes. And behind there is just all the debt schedule, if you're interested in those, and it also includes the water and sewer, I think on page forty-five. We looked at that earlier, that's, that includes the new issuance we did, uh, September, uh, twenty-one. And then on page forty-seven is the hotel motel tax filing. You don't have to make any decisions there, you've already done. So. That takes us all the way, do y'all wanna talk about, you know, projects first, or y'all wanna go back and talk about the taxation? Particularly street projects, I guess, is, we have some information to give y'all for that. Projects. Second.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Now, the, the smaller one that, that's on the wing side of the paper, these are, um, these are the, probably like the top ten or the next ten, growth-related, uh, roadway projects that we need to do. Y'all are probably all aware of these. Fifty-sixth Street from Millie Hex to Fodry, and then Millie Hex from one ninety-one to fifty-six. Yukon Road with the concrete intersection at, uh, from Dawn to Grandview. I think y'all are aware that we have a developer that's putting commercial along the south side of Yukon between Dawn and Grandview. He's cleared that off, it's got a big sign that.
The whole intersection, even, even going south of.
Yeah, I, I think.
Realignment of the.
Yeah, the master plan shows Grandview should be seven lanes all the way through, and that Yukon should be, is it five lanes all the way through or seven lanes? Seven all the way through. Um, he, so the developer will pay for a portion of, uh, adding some to Yukon from Dawn to, uh, Grandview, and then he'll have to do a portion along, uh, Grandview on the, uh, west side for his development that he, the commercial development that he's doing there. Um, so this kind of goes in line with that.
There's an area there where there's apparently a drill site, a pipeline river through there between where the residential stops and where the commercial stops. Is that the city's responsibility at that point?
Well, it's a, it'll, it's a drill reserve, uh, we're responsible for that portion of road that goes through there, but it's, it'll be the oil company's, uh, maintenance, if you will. Nothing can be built there, nothing ever will be built there, that's part of the agreement that.
The street, Grandview will have to be taken out of that.
We will have to pay for that portion of Grandview, yes, sir, as well as Dawn whenever that gets connected up.
Two hundred and fifty feet or whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
So that's why this North Grandview Avenue from Charles Walker to Shea Lane is, that's apart from Charles Walker's up there where the, you enter into the golf course, down to Shea Lane, uh, which is down on, uh, is, uh, south of Yukon always. And then Dawn Avenue, south of Yukon, north of Yukon, um, that's gonna come up, West Murphy Street between the Loop and South Crane Avenue. North Grandview. Oh, that's from Charles Walker on out, that's lower down. Yukon Road, so Yukon is five lanes from Andrews Highway back to, um, does it go all the way to Loop?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's four, like, part of it and.
Four, yeah.
But from Yukon to Dawn, uh, I mean, on Yukon, from Andrews Highway to Dawn is three lane. Until you get to Dawn, and then it becomes five lane. So these are road projects that are coming up and giving y'all projected cost numbers. I don't know, um, I, that's part of talking about what happens to fund road projects coming forward, that's good. Uh, one of the reasons we had done the initial ten million, okay, and then we got the bid in on Fodry and that kind of blew new road, other new roads out of there.
Council, what's important to note about these projects is that these are kind of being driven by developments occurring. These are development-driven projects, um, this list probably three years ago was different, so those things tended to change based on what pressure they're gonna apply. We wanted to, we wanted to give you a good look of at least some of the top priorities that we're seeing today, that might change to be from now to the future. Uh, but we wanted you to have a good sense of what those are and what those potential costs were.
Well, Dawn, south of Yukon, the five lane, I don't, we, we looked at that plaque, but I don't remember.
So it's currently a five lane today, I think, Tom, from, from fifty-six going north.
Fifty-six.
There's a center lane and two lanes on either side, so it'll be five lane.
One of the, I had one of the commissioners reach out to me and say that, asking if we had reached out to, uh, F, to the FFA, FAA about, uh, slay market, you know, out there, doing the roads out there, that, uh, airport.
Sorry, Mark, I couldn't hear you.
You said that someone had reached out to him regarding, uh, us touching base with the FFA, uh, along that white pattern, along that landing path.
Is that an issue, or?
You know, everything that we're gonna do is gonna be surface, right? So we're not building any structures, the only thing that we may build that would go up would be, uh, the most traffic systems, right? Uh, but the developer and the builder may have some issues, and so I think that those guys are aware of that.
Yeah, the next sheet, this sheet is actually the, the streets that are on the street maintenance, um, list to do. Um, this is coming out of the six million dollars annually that we're giving them, um, so, uh, that C and G, they're doing.
Curbing.
Some curb and gutter stuff, there's a Stancia Boulevard, that's in process. Uh, I think we've already awarded Tanglewood, pretty first, right?
Not wood, not a wood.
Wood design, okay, in the process there. So, uh, Public Works kind of spread this over a period of time, and, um, of course, they're hoping we can get to, to ten million a year. We didn't, um, plan to increase that this year, uh, we've just been at six million a couple of years now. So, uh, anything that, out of the six million, anything that they don't get completed and finished any year gets rolled over so that they're getting all the projects done.
So that's why Dixie and Fifty-second is all here along.
Yes, um, the first year we did this was in twenty, I believe, and, uh, you know, it was COVID year, it was hard getting stuff moving, so we actually had grown some of those funds, so they're playing catch-up a little bit right now.
Unlike the first, this, this is a necessity being driven by development, these are just roads that are bad to deal.
The whole reason we increased that amount, uh, I mean, that was based on the transportation ministry.
No, a couple of, and, and I know this probably doesn't have anything to do with these projects per se, but, you know, two or three years ago, maybe was when Tom resurfaced some of our, our streets with that, I, I can't remember what it's called, but it was a black surface, like they've done Charles Walker and all that. Has he been pleased with that?
I think go for all we have to, uh, we, we now have, we used to just do seal coat, which is the tar and the rocks, and now three or four different methods that we use on roads.
You know, and the reason I ask is, they did seventeen, 'cause I noticed none of mine are on here, but they did seventeen to Dixie, from Andrews Highway to Dixie, but man, a lot, that did not hold up at Tom Green.
Oh, no, at Tom Green.
Yeah, and, and so I had wondered, y'all, the Tom Green intersections don't get noted very often. You know, on some of these, you know, that are going concrete, and I don't know if, because that's not a, a major road, if that's why, but man, that, that blanked surface.
Talk about the intersection.
Yeah.
Water's, water's not your friend on asphalt.
Water's not friends on asphalt. And, uh.
The concrete, uh, we, we are going toward doing concrete on the intersections, and they have the dangerous traffic, as you know, water's less. The concrete comes at almost more than twice the price of asphalt.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
And you can get it right now.
Yeah, and I failed to mention down here, it shows you the, uh, what we did in seal coat, rejuvenation, the frack, the friction seal, um, those different.
And what's the black called?
Asphalt.
Yes. Oh, we have different.
I mean, you'll pressure some, pressure some. Council, uh.
All I'm just saying is, I just wanted to make a comment, as y'all well know, you know, our infrastructure with these roads, we're way behind the curve, everybody knows that. So I would, you know, I would just like everybody to consider what's happening northeast, and I know it's all in Tom and I's district, but, but it's, you haven't been out there, you just need to go. Eight o'clock in the morning, go at five o'clock in the afternoon and see traffic, and you know, I know you all know this, but you know that even on Motrans list of things is, uh, David Lee ultimately seen Yukon roads all the way from three oh two, all the way to the overpass from one ninety-one, has a major east-west thoroughfare, take the pressure off of Fifty-second, Forty-second, Second Street, and, uh, literally, Bentley County just did building their road from the airport, which is under construction now, you'd be able to go all the way from Turman Highway all the way up to the airport on Yukon. Larry Lee's finishing up this last part of that road, at least how we're fixing some of that overpass, but we just, out in that area, Millie Hex, you just need to drive out there some day as well. You know, it's just, it's absolutely awful. You think you're downtown Dallas, I was, I pulled off on the, on the Fodry, uh, at lunch yesterday by Chick-fil-A or wherever I was, and the cars are backed up from one ninety-one, passed the new license, not operational yet, that was just in one signal chain. I know it is a signal, one ninety-one all pass, all the way past Rachel Marner, backed up almost with the throttle drive, and it just takes forever to get to those intersections. Of course, we're fixing, I hope we're fixing Fodry, but man, that whole area is just so far behind. It's not gonna be any better, 'cause Larry Lee's bringing on, behind that shopping center, he's bringing on five hundred houses, they're on a contract for every one of them. You can believe that, because I was talking to you about PID, and he's like, can't do it, already got contracts on all the houses. You're kidding me. Already got contracts, all five hundred ones, so, it means that Dawn, Yukon, Grand, it's high, high volume, it's gonna be higher volume. So just, that's gotta think about that.
Council, we also wanted to again mention the Fodry project, as you know, we put that out for bid, the bids came in excessively higher than what we ever could have thought.
How much higher, because you're saying much higher, how much higher?
So we had just made the project at around twenty million, uh, the lowest bid we got on, um, one of the options was about thirty-one million.
So we're eleven minutes short.
Thirty-one point five.
That was, and that was the lowest.
That was the lowest, and that's what Mel concluded, so that's, that's something to consider. We're gonna bring an item, uh, and discuss, Council, discuss, review kind of everything that we've identified with, with, as it relates to that project, what are things that we can possibly take out of the project, how much would that save us, as well as have a discussion on, on what we're seeing cost. Because, again, initially in terms of our internal review, we're seeing that there's not gonna be a lot of savings if we take elements out. Uh, it's just really, what we're seeing is just a function of the market, that costs have gone up. Uh, we've also solicited the opinion of a third independent party to, to solidify our belief, and, uh, their initial indication is that we're exactly right, it's more a function of what's happening throughout the state. Inflationary costs, lack of materials, if you can get them, obviously, and then the costs associated with those materials, specifically asphalt and concrete.
Okay, so in, in making assessment and, you know, saying where we can wind up making adjustments in the design and then delivering to a product, to a product, do we compromise the territory of product, meaning that, do we wind up not being able to handle the flow of traffic as it need be? And then we shorten the line, expand, we're working a product up, instead of twenty years, go back to ten or eighty, and we have to rewire it, so, I mean. When we're considering those, those adjustments, are we taking that into consideration?
Yes, we are, we don't want to compromise, and we have initial thoughts, and we won't do maybe the entire length, we will do three lanes, seven, five, but none of that makes sense for the very reason you pointed out, is that you're gonna torchens yourself now and in the future.
It'll be that much more expensive now, so either we back, we might as well bite the bullet now.
Yes, sir.
Or kick the can down the road.
Well, no, no, we're, we're, the expansion's going down, then we just can't do it.
Exactly.
And, you know, there's, there's, you know, the, the issue is as far as supply and demand is gonna continue for another three years minimum, so it's not gonna get any, it's not gonna get more expensive.
So we're to get eleven million?
Well, plus a little, I mean, we're asking them, um, you know, a lot of times we look at, on construction jobs, we look at a contingency where probably ten to twenty-five percent, I think on, um, on university, we did eighteen percent. So we discussed it with Public Works and, uh, they felt pretty confident that a ten percent contingency would work. That's three point one million dollars for ten percent. So, you know, I got on top of the, and so now we're looking for fourteen million dollars, so. Where I had initially put into the budget a general fund to take ten million out of general fund and put it into street projects, um, that's short now about four million dollars. And can we take more out of general fund for it, yes, we can, but that doesn't give us any additional street projects out of that money right now, and I mean, um. And I mean, um.
Put this behind on the, on the general maintenance, the rest of the city.
No, 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 we are not touching the, the six million general maintenance. That's, that's the projects that are on the pull-out sheet. So that's, and seal coat and all the angle stuff that they did, that's, that's staying intact. We didn't want to touch that, because that just causes us more issues with other streets. So, you know, we can, when we present the bid for this, it may just have to come out of general fund dollars.
Well, we do compromise them, this, this list, these are the ones that are, again, as I said, mainly development driven. These are the projects that we're going to have to find money for.
And that, yeah, we don't know how long that's going to take, and Larry Lee's ready to start doing his stuff along Yukon. And so the fifty sixes have already traveled as well, and it's not in great shape.
Oh, it's horrible. It's horrible. Kind of another concern, I meant to bring it up, but I know you guys already addressed it, but they're building that Edken McDonald's there on Fodry behind the stripes. That's going to be, that's going to create a horrible mess when we start construction. Because they're not going to be through by the time, because we're tearing that end of the road up first, right? South end, start from the south.
Our road construction is going to hamper their business.
If it's going to hamper, you can finish with the construction.
Yeah, is that where Wiley Brown is taking that road out to?
Four ninety one. He's, he's almost finished, he's not quite finished yet.
Yeah, so there may be somewhat of a relief there.
Michael, when you say all these road projects are development driven, that, do they already have development plans planned for those roads? Or are they common?
No, sir, most of these is because we're already seeing increased activity due to development. So for example, fifty six probably was not on our list for a good while. But now that, that school is expanding, that there are more students, that has now become a major concern for us, that road needs to be reconstructed. The Yukon projects, Yukon's always been there, right? But because of Larry's developments, that's going to put more cars on there. That's going to necessitate more work on the intersections, some lighting work, and when you've driven that, that road, it's in pretty bad shape. So we want to get ahead of that. So that's what I mean, when they're development driven, something is happening or has happened, but it's going to more cars.
Does that cost lots of money?
Sir?
They, they're a portion of the cost, too.
You know, so if we look at the Don project, you know, that, you know, from Yukon to East End Street, because of that, everything that goes in there, there's a mechanism to reduce some of that cost. So whatever it costs us, we have an opportunity to get a huge percentage of that bag, but we have to build it all in one shot.
Well, we can do it one or two ways, Mayor, we can build it all in one shot and put a road, pro-bad on it, and as they plant that, they pass back. Or we can enter into development agreement with the developer, where they'll pay half, we'll pay the other half.
That's the way to go, those are two options. And so, but the thing is, is that the roads get bigger, and the cost keeps going up every day that we sit and, and wait. And so that, this is where we are, you know, either we stay, two things, just like water, either you're ahead of it or catching up. That's where we're at with the grant.
You need to get ahead of it, I mean, I've talked to Larry, my perspective, length, and he's got fifty thousand retail square feet in that shopping center, Stan? He's already got, he's already got restaurants, he's already got restaurants, sign, he's got.
I understand, but where do we get a hundred thirty seven million dollars?
I thought you just told me that.
Not that generous.
Well, and, and, you know, that's one of the reasons that we're giving you the individual cost, is as they become priority, that's what we'll be trying to address.
It's not a good situation.
But this, these things are going to come quicker than we think they are, and they're going to be, yeah.
Like you say, that's exactly right, City, Yukon, Yukon right there, and none of that shop, it's on us now, Don, Don's right there, too. It's on us.
Okay.
The, the one thing to consider, obviously, when you're funding this, or thinking about funding, is we've got a little bit of hard sell money coming back. Well, we now have the, the second half of the ten million dollars.
You were speaking that year more.
I had a discussion with Russell Tippin, again, he assures me that we're a lot closer than we were before on the, on the reimbursement. Yeah, so I hope that that's the case. We'll tell you that as it relates to the R R M C, we're not certain that that will ultimately go, we haven't distributed any dollars. But the state has changed kind of the requirements, so that's made it more complex for them. So they may ultimately decide that, you know, they don't want to pursue that. We had set aside a, a few million for kind of, at that point, we didn't know what COVID would do, or if they would come back raging, so we set aside a few million dollars. We think we can go back and maybe give some of that back. And so the council has options with the R M C, you can take it back in as revenue recovery dollars, right? Or specifically in the legislation, as you'll read there, you can use it for water and sewer. So that's something to think about, and.
Yeah, we've received the second charge, it's in the bank. So we, we didn't make that part of the budget because of the separate grant allocation. But yeah, we need to, we need to look at allocating that money. And so if you take it back in as recovery money, then you can turn around, there's still restrictions on what you can use it for as general fund recovery money. But infra, street infrastructure is one of the things that we can do without. So there's an option there for some of this. I think probably sooner than anything is the additional cost of Fodry, and I think that's probably going to be a general fund request. So it may be in addition to the ten million that I proposed here, it may be an additional amount of funding.
We got ten million in the bank with the R M C, we still have another three from M C H that we're, we're waiting on. And we never distributed the, when did we give the R M C?
One.
But we haven't given.
So they may just go ahead and back.
They may, we don't know that for sure, Mayor, but, but like I said, the conversations with the state have become, have gotten more complex in terms of requirements. So we don't know ultimately whether.
Ultimately, we'll make the decision, they pull out, make that decision.
I think, I think we're going to wait for them, and then we made the commitment, provide that. And if they can meet the obligations that the state wants now, our anticipation is that they'd be able to get that back and back to us at some point. So at this point, we're kind of, we're kind of waiting for them to see whether or not they're going to be able to meet the state's requirements.
Can we set a deadline for that?
The contract itself has a deadline of twenty, twenty-three?
The year, so, well, we should know by the end of this calendar year, because everything has to be filed with FEMA by then.
Yeah, well, that's true.
It'd be nice to be able to see if we're going to make a decision how we're going to allocate that, be great if we do, thirteen, fourteen, or just ten.
Yeah, and there's still.
Are they still actively pursuing it?
Yes, I mean, I, we've had recent conversations with the state, so.
It's been a year and a half since we did that.
Yeah.
It's been.
A bit more.
It's been, it's almost.
It feels like a year.
Also, I, I think we, we've got about four million that we did, as I said, for COVID response for the city. We don't think we're going to need all that, and we can probably give back about two. And we programmed that back into either water sewer projects or take it back in as revenue recovery.
That would be, with that, with the three one, see, that'd be, that'd get you up to sixteen, almost.
Do we look in this place, addressing this issue?
Mayor, we want to bring that to you probably in the next month or so. Just have a discussion with R M C, how you want to allocate it. And then we'll have a much better sense, I think, for what we have internally. Again, I'll find it, update it with Russell, if we're any closer there. But we can certainly get the councils a tip on where you might want to put those dollars.
I certainly think we need to keep it for ourselves, because we've got more needs than anybody else.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we've done everything we can, and now we can start looking within our infrastructure, whether we want to do it in, revenue recovery, revenue redistribution, definitely water and sewer distribution, and, and road, but no. Million here, million there, in this case, doesn't go that far. Sixteen million, yes. If you look at sixteen million, this is huge. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's only, with the thirty million spent to M C H, we've spent just right at a little over thirty million, three million one seventy. We have not had a lot of time coded to payroll reimbursement, so we really hadn't done anything with that. It, it's not as easy to do that under this money as it was under CARES, because with CARES funds, that was during the pandemic, and they pretty much classified fire department, everything as being COVID related, and that's not the case under this funding. So.
Very much restricted.
Very much more restricted. And trying to track time, you know, you know, for them to track their time between, yeah, I had a COVID patient, no, I didn't, you know, it's pretty horrific.
I think there's been a public narrative that the council should consider this money, ten million for, or be distributed for emergency, you know, for payroll. I don't think that possible.
Not because this money is a one-time shot, it's not an ongoing.
Right. Yeah, I don't think that, you know, Jen probably would understand.
Anything, so we're right back to talking about the tax rate. You do not get to leave.
Can't dodge the augers.
Side traffic. I'm with the N O V's new revenue rate, so we're increasing the, the sewer and the water, and we're with the N O V's new revenue rate.
Well, they're going to already express an increase, just because of the.
Depraigals.
Depraigals. So they'll be going, just basically on twenty-five hundred bucks a year on recovery taxes. They're going to experience about a twenty-six hundred dollar, I mean, a six, a hundred dollar, hundred and twenty dollar increase. That is doing an additional increase. And then with the water rate, I just think we should stick with the N O V's revenue rate also.
After reviewing our needs, I think we're probably need to do the voter approval rate. Their taxes are going to go up anyway, and we're all going to hear about it, we'll all hear their complaints. If we held it at our current rate, the rates are going to go up. So, and I think we have enough needs, and if you look just a few months into the future, when we may have the, the salary assessment complete, we know there's going to be some needs there.
I probably don't, I probably don't deserve it at all, I've, I've thought all along, we've tried to hold it down all we can, because at some point, you've got to pay the fiddler. Or we've got to use fund balance, and I sure don't want to, that's dangerous, you know? Because you never know where another pandemic might get or something else. Thank us, you know, I was kind of impressed the other day, we're sitting there at a hundred and nine million in fund balance. Middleton was so happy, they finally got to a hundred and ten. And that's hard to believe with all the money they've got up there. So I, I think we're doing pretty damn good personally. Having that, that stat should be committed by getting it there, that was proven. But now we just can't keep dipping into it, I think. So you've got to look at every revenue source we can, so, you know, that's why I'm so hot on trying to get this O D C thing done. There's a lot of money sitting in O D C, it's not going to work. That's taxpayer money, that sales tax, that, you know, roads are, roads are roads, people that use our roads from out of town help pay those bills. So it's a, it's a perfect place to get some of this road money, in my opinion, and I know you all know that, I'm repressing heart on that, I think it's important. We're always behind the curve on this infrastructure, we've got to get ahead of it somehow. So we've got to utilize every resource we've got. It's not too sensible, you know it's not popular, but. Where do you guys, where are you guys at on the, on the, at the R M C?
Well, I, I'd have to, first of all, before that, Cindy, you and your staff, I want to thank you guys. You know, I don't think we thank you enough for what you do in this budget and how you keep us as a city afloat. So I just want, before I forget anything, and before I don't do it, I want to say thank you to you guys for all that you do, and for keeping us in this thirty-four-year role of doing a great job with the budget. So first of all, thank you guys for that, in front of me, thank you for that. Having said that, I would go with the voter approval tax rate, and oftentimes we say them, and we're here from them, I'm a taxpayer. So this affects me as well. So I have to, you know, for those of us who are taxpayers, it affects us too, so we're not just putting it on them, it's us, you know? But we've got a lot of needs, and I wish we had the money to do a Christmas list and just get everything done, and still have money left over. It's just not, it's just not possible. But we've got to be able to do some of the things that are going to keep our city a city where we can drive on roads and where we can do things. I don't want to increase taxes anymore than the next person, I don't want a water and sewer increase, it affects me, and I have an household, you know, and I'm on a fixed income, as they call it, as a retiree, but there are some things that we just have to do. And so I, at this point, with, based on the needs and having listened, all according to what, you know, and, and it's not going to stop. When we do this, there's going to be more needs, and we're going to have to do more things. But right now, I think that's the way out, the way out we go, is just to voter approve, approve of tax. That's my spiel.
Where do we go?
Way up. I sure would like to go the N O V revenue, though what concerns me is the compensation state. And, I mean, we know it's coming. And I, not only do I doubt that we'll have any positions that are overpaying, even if we've got positions that are comparable, you know, I don't think that gives a free ride to, don't give any races to your force, you know? I think that retention is, is a big deal, and we've got to keep that in mind, with all of the needs that we have, and what we know is going to be pending, this fire department issue and police, and everybody, everybody. I'm going to have to go the voter approval rate.
So, and the majority?
What's yours?
I'd still like to give everybody.
We, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't take no revenue.
No revenue.
I didn't know that was your money.
Yeah, so that's what I mean, there's a majority to go forward with the, with the voter approval. So start making, that'd be an additional one point four million, roughly.
Maybe a million there. A million here, a million there, goes everywhere, dude. Goes fast. It goes down or goes up.
It's a tough deal, you know.
It is tough. It's against twenty-two.
Okay, guys, anything else?
No, I just want to thank Randy for breakfast and lunch, it was all delicious. And getting us that, it was so well.
Did you get up at three and start cooking, or?
I did. I always like to try. Anything else, anything we didn't cover that y'all had a burning desire to know?
The only, the only day that things doesn't go haywire in the city is the day that ends in a one.
Um, brag?
So it's, it's a world turn, minute by minute. Guys, thank you very much.
When do we, when do we finally agree?
Well, talk about the schedule.
Yeah, Zach, do you want to talk about our budget schedule?
Uh, Michael?
We have to replace Zach's computer, he's got a loaner.
How's upstairs, what's this, you can read?
You know, I have all this paperwork, and it comes from here, so it's, it's still pretty fun to have computers.
We get the rest for the council.
Well, things are going to tell us what our schedule is, right?
Right, we're going to. Right, we're gonna.
Norma, I've gone this far away.
Okay, okay.
Val, you talk about it, did you?
You know, you can say, you're funny, I think.
And the reason we pass out the ARCA thing is because we're gonna be, um, talking about that allocation, and so we were giving y'all information to read about what's allowed and not allowed, just to refresh your memory, um.
But it's changing, you know.
Yeah, you know, when we did it the first time, we had an interim, we had an interim rule, and now they have the final rule, and so, um.
There's more broader topics that takes down, talking some of the. There's a deadline for that also.
The funds have to be spent or encumbered on Friday by twenty twenty, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Then, yeah, we don't have two years after that.
To next week, continue your project.
So, that's another thing, anything that we decide to deal with, um.
If it's infrastructure, it has to be covered, and then it has to be computed, and I'll have to, not, we're charging money.
If you have BOB this last week.
Maybe somebody can just, Judge Combs, pardon me, I said they were.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have to have both.
You have, just here.
Just for everybody's, just for everybody's information, um, as far as dates that are coming up that are important, dates really important for finances, special post-budget book, has to be filed by August eighth, so that's really, we kind of already discussed the changes, so we should be good for that. The next time we're gonna need to discuss about the budget book is August ninth, so the second week of August, to establish a minimum tax rate, which is basically, we're gonna officially say we're doing the voter approval, correct? And then after that, it is the August, the next important date is August twenty-third, which is the first public hearing on the budget book, um, today, that's August twenty-third.
And, uh, just so y'all know, that, that voter approval rate is my calculation based on the information I got from the appraisal districts, they actually have to do the formal calculation, uh, I don't expect it to change, but if it does, it's probably very minimal, but, uh, they should be able to get us that within a week or so.
Any other thing? Any final discussion? Say there's no more business before this, uh, council, we are adjourned.
Thank y'all.